Welcome, everyone. Call the meeting to order, please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for invocation tonight by North Chapel's Michelle Hasley. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. If you bow with me, please. Lord, we humbly come before you tonight, thankful for your love, protection, and guidance in our lives. We lift up to you tonight, dear Lord, this town of Fountain Hills that you've placed us in, our mayor, and this council as they meet this evening, that you would bless them and all in attendance with your wisdom and discernment in all that they say and do, that their actions would be pleasing in your sight, and they would feel your presence with them, Lord, as they guide our community to a closer walk with thee, to a rightful and fitful end of the meeting, and that they would accomplish a great deal with your guidance upon them. We thank you for this gathering, and we love you, Lord, and we pray in Jesus Christ's most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlem.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey is absent. Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Yes.
Councilmember LaGee.
Thank you. All right. First, I should have mentioned this last council meeting, but I want to wish Councilmember Elke a happy birthday. His birthday had just passed, so happy birthday, Councilmember Elke. Hope it was a great one. Now, we'll move on to public appearances. I'll call on Bev to introduce Ray Valenzuela and Kristi Pazzarelli.
Yes, Mayor, I want to thank both members of the Maricopa County Elections Department for being here and providing us a presentation on early mail balloting. Kristi Pazzarelli is the Campaign Finance and Jurisdictional Manager for the Maricopa County, and Ray Valenzuela is the Assistant Elections Director.
Great. Thanks for coming out today and come on up to the podium so we can capture your audio and the video on the cameras around you. And thanks for coming out to Fountain Hills tonight.
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing us to come out and provide you some information on the all-mail process. I know it's a monumental occasion for you because this is your first time doing an election by the all-mail process. I wanted to give you some, I know I think the city clerk vendors provided you with the handouts, and there's handouts in the back that is kind of a Q and A with the process. So instead of going directly from that, I'll just highlight some of the process itself and give you some information and allow for questions if there are any. The all-mail process itself has been in existence for quite some time, historically, actually since the Civil War. It's a option that, a vote-by-mail option, similar to early voting, whereby a voter can participate in the electoral process through the mail. We have, you're in good company opting to do the election via the all-mail process. We currently conduct elections for multiple cities and towns. Just to give an example, Town of Paradise Valley, City of Litchfield Park, Carefree, Peoria, Goodyear, El Mirage, Surprise, City of Mesa has done some all-mail elections. And the reason behind it is, again, answered in some of that question-and-answer session, but more specifically is that the process is both safe, secure, and efficient, and in your case, cost-effective. What I'll do is I'll highlight some of the benefits of the, just as I mentioned, of the all-mail process. First off, the effectiveness of it. The all-mail process allows for every voter to, that's eligible to participate, to receive an early vote-by-mail ballot automatically. So it basically enables those individuals that may have some limitations in a polling-place environment, and everybody, since you've conducted elections in a polling-place environment, the polling-place environment requires that the polling place be only open on Election Day, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So obviously, individuals that are, have limitations, whether disability, scheduling, they have, can be disenfranchised through that process. Now, again, it is still a viable method for conducting elections, and many, you know, Maricopa County conducts its polling-place elections, but again, the benefit of the all-mail is the individual automatically receives a ballot and those that are eligible. One of the things I want to highlight is a lot of, there's a lot of misnomers about the all-mail or vote-by-mail process, its security, some of those issues that, again, I call them folklore. If you're in the process, you'll know how secure it is. One of the things that we emphasize, or what we do is, in order to get an early ballot or a ballot by mail, in this all-mail process, you have to be a registered voter. To be a registered voter, a lot of people don't know, that they submit that form, the form comes to us, it has to have certain particular information that we validate and verify with various agencies. So example, you submit your form, name, date of birth, address, last four, your social security number, driver's license. Before that voter, or that individual becomes a registered voter, we balance it against INS, Social Security, MVD. We validate that this is a true and correct individual, valid individual, that all of this information matches, then they make it to the voter registration rolls. So then that individual would then be automatically scheduled, example here for the Town of Fountain Hills, all your eligible voters will automatically be sent an early ballot. One of the main security features we have is the logging and tracking of every single ballot that goes out by this process. Literally, we track the moment it was entered into the system, the moment it was printed, the moment it was mailed, and we even go as far as tracking the packet all the way through the mail process. One of the things, everybody's familiar with the term R and D, research and development, we use, we call that rob and duplicate, because what we've done is we've actually copied some other industries, such as the credit card industry, to say, how do we manage and secure the mail process? And how we've done that is we've utilized technologies that they have in distributing credit cards. We treat that ballot just like money, so to speak. We want to know where it's at, and we track it at all times, all the way through, from the main post office to the point where it gets to the local, all the way into the carriers, literally into the carrier's truck, into your mailbox. So it is a secure process, it is going to a eligible and already validated voter, and upon return, we're also tracking that, and we're doing one of the key things that, again, many voters don't know, is that we do signature verification on 100% of those ballots. There's not one ballot that comes back, it's not a random sampling, 100%. And by that I mean is, each ballot that goes out contains not only the ballot to vote upon, but it also contains an affidavit that the voter signs and swears and affirms they are who they are, and that gets, the ballot gets sealed in that affidavit envelope, that's returned to us. That affidavit envelope remains unopened, we do a signature verification process on that, meaning we take that affidavit signature and we compare it to the actual one on the voter's registration record. So it's a one-to-one comparison, if the signature matches, then we indicate that on the system that it's a good signature, and it gets sent on to a citizen board, which is made up of two individuals of differing political parties for checks and balances, and those individuals will then do a second process where they audit that record, they separate, for the secrecy of the voting purposes, they separate the signed affidavit envelope from the ballot so the ballot can go on to be tabulated. But again, there's security features in this process throughout. The biggest key thing is, like I said, the 100% signature verification. There's specific details that, you know, I can cover as far as, you know, some questions that may come up, well, what happens when the signature doesn't match, or we've had circumstances where the voter doesn't sign or forgets to sign. There's due diligence done to make sure that every vote that's possible to count is counted. We'll go as far in a no-signature example, we'll go as far as to re-mail the vote, the ballot back in its entirety with a letter, another special return envelope, tell the voter you forgot to sign this. If you wish to sign or wish a second ballot, we go through that second effort. We contact the voter, if we have a phone number, and say, you know, you forgot to sign, or in the circumstance of the signature not matching, we, and we have those occur. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that possibly at 16 or so, you got your driver's license, and you signed up, and now with motor voter, you can actually sign up at the same time you get your driver's license to vote, to register to vote. So that signature has, at 16, has the I's with the heart over it and the O's with the smiley face, you know, the, what we call the immature signature. Then, of course, you're 22-plus, still living in that household, and you now have a more mature signature, and so we do have those circumstances. So we don't disenfranchise the voter, we will make every effort to contact that voter and say, you know, and we validate with that voter first their identity, because when you fill out a registration form, it provides a lot of information that should only be known to that voter. Mother's maiden name, last four, your social security. So we can validate without inconveniencing the voter saying, the signature didn't match, you know, what, and yes, indeed, I did remember receiving that, I did sign that, I did vote that, and we know it is the voter we're speaking to, we'll identify that, we'll log on there, our initials, that we talk to the voter, and we can process that. So I'll give you an example, in a larger election, Maricopa County has mailed over 700,000 early ballots in one of our countywide elections. In the process of that, and doing returns, we've had over 22,000 that were what we call exemptions, meaning there, something needs to be happened to them. But when it was all said and done, there were a total of 200 that remained unable to process because the voter didn't contact us back, there was no signature, they never returned it. So that's a pretty good number to show that not only is it going out a safe procedure, coming back is secure, but in addition to that, every effort is made to make sure that every voter's voice that's cast through that ballot is heard. So again, that's one of the key things of the all-mail process is a security feature, in addition to, of course, the effectiveness of being able to accommodate every eligible voter, whether they may have limitations due to schedule, due to disability, due to something that may restrict them to getting there from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Election Day. One of the nice things about all-mail balloting is for those individuals that want to vote in person, you still have the scenario, I'll give you the scenario of my very own father-in-law who's 80 years old, I tried to get him vote by mail, he doesn't trust ATMs, he doesn't trust the vote-by-mail process. His final answer to me is, look, I'm 80 years old, and I like seeing the young ladies at the polling place. Our average age is about 60, 70, and those are the young ladies that he likes to go see. But again, if those individuals that want to come vote in person, the beauty of the all-mail process is you can still do that. The difference is it's open 26 days throughout the period of voting to come in and do that, all the way up to the Election Day, which is still open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So the polling place environment, it's not, no longer called a polling place, it's called a replacement ballot site, and no longer by law requires three or four polling places, it limits it to one site, and as an example, the city clerk, or the town clerk's office would serve as that replacement in addition to our three offices, although you may say, because it was a beautiful drive, although a long drive up here, I don't know how many people drive to our downtown office to vote, but you might have voters that work in the downtown area. So they, anytime for that 26-period, day-period, they can vote in person. So they can opt to receive that ballot, utilize it, if not, they can bring that in, vote it, and actually bring it in person if they want that environment, or they can replate, get a replacement ballot and vote that at that site. So again, it has so many benefits, it mirrors the polling place environment, but without the restrictions of saying, one polling place for every precinct type of thing. We no longer have to hire seven board workers to, at a polling place, to, on Election Day, using, again, a grander scope, we hire over 7,000 employees or temporary board workers in the Maricopa County election, seven for the thousand-plus polling places we have. Those seven employees are now, that, all those costs that would have been incurred for supplies, for equipment to be sitting out there during that time, is now staged in a secure environment in the clerk's office, not in a, in a school auditorium or something that, it's in a secure environment with a ballot box, and the voters still are enabled and eligible to participate via the mail process or the drop-off or vote-in-person process. One of the big things that we see as far as this process goes is, and again, the election process is mostly to serve the constituents, but we know that there's, you have to consider the candidates and the campaigns out there. A lot of the candidate campaigns have come on board to this process because the benefit of it is there's a solid date when that voter will have that ballot in their hand. Every single voter, 100%, at approximately 24 days, we mail it 26 days out, so you, you know, the normal mailing would be within one to two days. You can target that audience in a more efficient and effective way rather than a polling place, you don't know if they're going to go to the polling place, when they're going to go, you don't know if they're going to do an early ballot, when they're going to request it. Basically, 100% of these voters are going to have, I can tell you the date that they're going to have that ballot in their hand, and as far as whether it's an issue, whether it's a candidate, a campaign that wants to, the town hall has an exact special issue coming up in November 8th, you can effectively contact those voters prior to them casting that ballot. But what the biggest benefit is having educated voters. And by that I mean, if you, many of you are sure participated in our primary and general elections, it's two-sided, in a general election, there's up to 100 and something offices and issues, and by law, you have five minutes, according to law, to vote that ballot if you go to a polling place in a booth. To keep the lines moving, that's the most time, and obviously, we don't enforce that, it's one of those things, but it, what happens is you have those voters that tend to go there and say, I didn't study about that issue, I wasn't aware that was going to be on there. Having the convenience of that ballot in your hand 26 days gives you the time to say, let me see what that issue is. Now, some may say that's good or bad, but I mean, the fact of the matter is that the voter can make an educated decision, they can do the research, they can take the time, they can cast their ballot, and you can reach and get a more solid demographics of your community by having those voters being able to, have the ability to take responsibility to educate themselves on an issue, candidate, campaign measure, whatever it may be. So again, it's one of our key things that we, when we talk about elections, we emphasize the efficiency of the all-mail. It's not only just it's effective for the voters, it's also, again, I mentioned, cost-effective. I know I have some numbers here that I presented that, in a polling place environment, the, because we have to set up polling places, not knowing who's going to come in, we have to plan 100% of the people will come in, we have to print ballots for 100% of people, and in most elections, to be honest with you, we'll get in a smaller jurisdiction, a 10% turnout. You have, you could have, in your case, you have 16,000 registered voters, to get a 10% turnout seems a little bit dismal, but it's, you know, with the all-mail process, we have actual statistics we've been tracking. We actually have jurisdictions that have seen 10% turnouts change to 40 to 50% turnouts. We actually have specific stats that we've collected over the years. I can tell you right now, the City of Phoenix has gone to a vote-center environment because in past elections, they had 90% of their elections or their ballots cast were done by mail. And this was not an all-mail election, it was individuals that either on the permanent early voting list and/or had made a solicitude saying, send me a ballot by mail. So of 100% of their turnout, that actually, those individuals that came out, 90% did by mail, and when they went to the permanent early voting list process, they actually increased their participation up to in the 20 to 30%. Still, we'd love to see it in 100%, but when you see on average of 10% of your community, there's got to be a reason, either they can't get to those polls, but when you see that 10% turn into 30, 40, 50%, it's a good thing. I mean, we never barked to say that there's, you know, turnout's a bad thing. So again, it's one of those things that's proven, it's there, the data's there, and the cost itself, like I said, for a polling place election, we set up and we have to charge for that polling place, whether anybody shows up or not, whether, and we've had jurisdictions where the board workers have sat there from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. and had 10 people show up. So they're sitting there, and that cost is incurred. We have to charge a fee for that, and we charge a fee per registered voter, whether they show up or not. In addition to that, in a polling place election, we charge and have to charge for each early ballot that's mailed out. So in this scenario, Town of Fountain Hills has 16,286 registered voters, the cost for that is upward of $22,000. The cost for the early ballots can be in the $40,000 range when you do an on-the-ground election. With all-mail, it's only one flat fee, and that fee comes out to approximately $34,000. So you're talking about a $6,000 saving just for you. Now, if you multiply that 16,000 to 160,000-type jurisdiction, you're talking about a 400,000 versus a 340,000 election. You multiply that in a Maricopa County scenario, 1.9 million, it's a substantial savings. So again, it's, I don't know that Town of Fountain Hills will get to 160,000 registered voters, but I mean, as you increase with the more permanent early voters that you have on file that are automatically going to get an early ballot, it's one of those things that definitely is a consideration to look at. One of the other issues, or one of the other benefits of the all-mail process is that how the mails, how they affect the voter. Again, it gives, there's no lines, you don't have that one day, everybody has to show up, and sure enough, between 6:00 and 7:00, between work, there's thousands of folks standing outside, and between 5:00 and 6:00, it's, that 26-day period is there, so no lines. The other, the other thing that happens in a polling place environment as required by law is you have to show proof of ID to vote. So a lot of times, we have a lot of what we call provisional ballots, I mean, the individual comes in and didn't update their driver's license, they moved, they're in the Town of Fountain Hills, but it doesn't show that, they have to do provisional. All of those have to be processed Election Night or the following morning. With this process, that goes away because your verification, your ID is your signature. Basically, it's, it takes, in lieu of ID, you've actually validated and verified you are who you are. So we don't have, the results are faster. In other words, by Election Night at 8:00 p.m., we'll be providing the unofficial results, and there's nothing technically in an all-mail election that we're waiting for other than those early ballots, or those vote-by-mail ballots that were, happened to be dropped up at the replacement ballot site or possibly at other polling places that we still need to process. But we don't have conditional provisionals, we don't have regular provisionals, none of that exists, it's just processing that signature verification and getting the results. One of the examples I can show you is the August election for the City of Surprise just recently occurred, they were the, an all-mail election, we were able to give them their results at 7:00 p.m. on Election Night, because the law says no later than 8:00 p.m. or until the polls close, there were no other polls in places in that election, so at 7:00 p.m. , if the polls were closed. We gave them the results, we followed up the very next day on Wednesday, given their official results. Under normal circumstances, we have to close out the conditionals, we have to do all this processing, and it's usually Friday by the time, and of course, the press and the candidates and the campaigns are anxious to know, and by Friday, we were barely giving you supplemental or possibly some official results. So there's a lot of benefits to the all-mail process. Its major benefits, again, is to the security of it, the tracking, the return, validation, signature verification, all of that, and more importantly, the participation that I can promise you, you're going to see increase from any past election you've had as far as percentage. If you're seeing a 10%, you're going to see a 20 to 30%. If you're seeing 30%, that's great, you're going to see 60, 70. So that's one of the beauties, and the statistics have proven that. So there are some other details, again, that I won't, you know, keep you because they are part of the Q and A thing, but I'll open it up if there's any other questions or anything you have about the process.
Good, thanks, Mr. Valenzuela. Mr., I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Cantino.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you set the people that are watching and will be watching this during the next week or two, mind at ease on the absence, or the early ballots that do it and how this will or won't affect them? So a lot of them are going to say, well, what about us to do in the early ballots since this is an all-mail ballot?
The fact is that when you opt to do an all-mail election, early voting doesn't exist, because actually, all-mail is one and the same, early voting. Early voting is a method by which an individual can request an early ballot for an election on a given day and get that so far out by mail. Well, this is technically an early ballot on steroids, so to speak. Basically, you don't, they don't have to initiate the request, everybody gets an early ballot. So for lack of a better word, it's, it's early balloting, same as what an individual would have called, and said, can you send me a ballot? The exception is that it's handled the same way, it's tracked the same way, the voter just simply does not have to request the ballot. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions, we're in the mail-in, but Councilmember LaGee?
Mr. Valenzuela, thanks for coming out to Fountain Hills, and thank you for your presentation. You mentioned surprise. Do you have any statistics on how many people participated in that all-mail election?
I actually do. I have the City of Surprise data here, because I said, I bet you they'll ask me. Actually, the one, the nice thing about this is that we actually have City of Surprise data from when they were doing polling place elections way back when, in 2003. Since then, they have been doing, conducting their elections via the all-mail election. So in 2003, they had a 14.5 total percentage turnout. They had a, in that particular circumstance, there was 34,000 registered eligible voters, they had 4,900-plus show up to vote polling place. They switched to the all-mail process, and in September 11, 2007 election, they had 44,000, they increased 10,000 registered voters, they had a 51% turnout after switching, the first time switching to an all-mail. So they went from a 14.5 to a 51%. They had 13,759 ballots cast. 2009, their next ensuing all-mail election, they had, it was a special, just a special board, so there was only 9,318 eligible voters, it was just for one specific district that they were holding, they had 4,777 of them show up, almost 44% of the eligible voters that participated. One of the other jurisdictions that we have noted, which is Town of Carefree, it has 1,686 registered voters, but in their, one of their March 8, 2011 election, they had 1,400 show up via the vote-by-mail, 88% of their constituents participated in that election.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Any other questions? Excellent. Bev, anything?
No, I just hope our results match, Mayor, so we have more people out there actually returning the ballot.
I hadn't thought of the additional time you have to review things in the short amount of time you have in the booth. If you're not prepared, they always have, or you've sent out the example ballot in the past, so you could kind of do your homework in advance, and obviously, you're following the issues, but no, thank you very much. Thanks for coming out, thank you, county, thanks for taking good care of the ballots.
Thank you, and appreciate the opportunity.
Have a great night, shop at our restaurants, and eat dinner here before you leave.
Thank you.
All right, next, I get the writ of proclamation for declaring September 17th as Constitution Commemoration Day. We've done this for a number of years, and our youth, I think, tonight are participating in a, in a ceremony down there where they've written essays and compete with other surrounding school districts, and they always do very, very well, and I believe one of our former council members, or Shamo, has represented us down there because it always falls on a school, on a council meeting night. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the Constitution of the United States was signed 224 years ago on September 17, 1787, to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. And whereas this cherished document, born of spirited contention and gracious compromise, provides a natural gateway of, to that study of our past, which may enlighten the charting of our future. And whereas we are, we all share the blessings granted by the Constitution and the responsibilities of ensuring that those blessings fall upon all our people. And whereas, as we mark the 224th anniversary of our nation's founding document, we celebrate the effort, dedication, and wisdom of our founders and the blessings of liberty that resulted from their labors. Now therefore, I, J.D. Schlem, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 17, 2011, as Constitution Commemoration Day, and heartily encourage the citizens of Fountain Hills to study the duties of citizenship and renew their dedication to the principles of the Constitution dated this 15th day of September, 2011." And I know many of us witnessed the youth of our second-grade class at McFell Mountain Elementary School go through the, what do we call it? There, well, that's the preamble, just making sure we all knew that. But they explained what preamble meant and what posterity meant, and they had the whole preamble memorized, it was tremendous, and they do that every year. So Constitution Commemoration Day this Saturday. Next proclamation is regarding Family Day, and it reads as such, "Whereas the use of illegal and prescription drugs and the abuse of alcohol and nicotine constitute the greatest threat to the well-being of our American's children, and whereas parents who are engaged in their children's lives are less likely to have children who abuse substances, and whereas families dinners, family dinners have long constituted a substantial pillar of family life in America, whereas frequently fam, family dining is associated with lower rates of teen smoking, drinking, illegal drug use, and prescription drug abuse, and now therefore, I, J.D. Schlem, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim Monday, September 26th, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in its observance." So two great proclamations, certainly important ones. We'll now go to, actually, I have, I meant to mention this at my moment, and we are getting into the busy season, Chamber knows this, a lot of the organizations know this, a lot of events are coming up, so make sure you're checking all the websites around town, all the organizations. substances, and whereas families dinner, family dinners have long constituted a substantial pillar of family life in America, whereas frequently fam, family dining is associated with lower rates of teen smoking, drinking, illegal drug use, and prescription drug abuse, and now therefore, I, J T Schlum, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim Monday, September 26th, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in its observance." So, two great proclamations, certainly, uh, important ones. We'll now go to, uh, oh, actually, I have, uh, I meant to mention this at, at my moment, and, uh, we, we are getting into the busy season, Chamber knows this, um, a lot of the organizations know this, a lot of events are coming up, so make sure you're checking all the websites around town, all the organizations, I'll just mention a couple. Movie in the Park is this Saturday, at, uh, Free in the Park at dusk. Smithsonian Day at the Museum on the following Saturday, the 24th of September. Ballet Under the Stars the next, uh, evening on the 25th of the Sunday. And then the following weekend is the beginning of Oktoberfest, the September 30th, uh, through, um, October 1st, Friday and Saturday. Homecoming Parade downtown, October 5th, and of course, the Falcons at the high school are busy with volleyball, football, cross-country, and a nu, number of things, so go Falcons and get out and support your local team. Now, we'll go to call to the public.
No cards, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to, for the, actually, I'll read through the consent agenda and then look for a motion. Item 1, consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from August 4, 9, and 18th, 2011. Item 2, consideration of approving liquor license applications submitted by Jing Lu, DBA Haha, for Series 12 license restaurant. 3, consideration of approving liquor license application submitted by Lynn, Sarah Lynn Meredith, DBA Alamo Saloon, a Series 6 license bar. Number 4, consideration of approving acquisition of control liquor license application submitted by, uh, Lukewitz, agent for Club at Copperwind, Series 11 Hotel Motel license. Item 5, consideration of special events being coordinated by the Town of Fountain Hills, Community Services Department, the Movie in the Park, September 17th, Ballet Under the Stars, September 25th, Homecoming Parade, October 5th, and Homecoming Tailgate Party, October 7th. Swallow Boulevard will be closed for, from Avenue of the Fountain to Palisades for Movie in the Park and Ballet Under the Stars. Sections of the Avenue Fountains and Portland, Northern Parkway will be closed for the Homecoming Parade. Item 6, consideration of special event application for the Oktoberfest presented by the Town of Fountain Hills, Southwest German Society, Sons of Amvets, and Fountain Hills, Alex Lodge, 2846, to be held at Fountain Park on September 30th, October, through October 1st. And item 7, consideration of special event application for the Race Place Events for Tour de Scottsdale Bicycle Race, scheduled for Sunday, October 2, from 8 till 10, that goes through town. And item 8, last item, consideration of app, accepting the Third Amendment to the hiking license agreement between the town and MCO properties for access to the McDowell Mountain Preserve for guided hikes. Could I get a motion?
Can I move, second?
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye on everything, one, I would refuse, on item one, I would deny the thing.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero?
Thank you very much. Make sure you folks remember we need to use the microphones. I always forget to remind us for that and that. All right, right onto the regular agenda. Item 9, consideration of appointing three applicants to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term beginning October 1, 2011, and ending September 31st, 2013. Says call on Bob, but I don't think I really call on Bob on this one. I move to appoint Cecil Yates, Lloyd Pugh, Mike Archambeau to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term beginning October 1, 2011, and ending September 31st, 2013.
Second.
All right, um, any discussion? Speaker cards?
No, sir.
Right. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Mayor Six Zero?
Thank you. Item number 10, consideration of appointing one youth to fill, hold on, any of those commissioners here, Cecil Yates, before he sneaks out? I think that's, uh, one or two, yeah, I think, I forgot to ask you to stand if you were here, and, uh, thank you for your support and your continued support and your interest. It's nice to have, uh, additional applicants than there are positions, so thank you for the community for your interest in serving the town, and thanks to those that are continuing to serve. Um, item number 10, consideration of appointing one youth to fill the youth commissioner vacancy on the Strategic Plan Advisory Commission, SPAC, for a term expiring on Ja, June 30th, 2013. I move to appoint Sarah Trailer to fill the youth commissioner vacancy on the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee for a term ending on June 30th, 2013. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Great, I know Sarah would be here, but she's at the Constitution event, so congratulate high schooler Sarah Trailer for being on the, um, SPAC. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Mayor Six Zero?
Great, thank you. Item 11, consideration of accepting a bronze sculpture entitled Shima Two on loan while fundraising campaign is conducted, and to place the item on public display within the Centennial Circle. Mark, welcome, how are you?
Thank you, very fine, thanks. Uh, Mayor Schlum and members of the council. Uh, it's my pleasure to present to you another piece of art for our public display. This particular piece was created by Martha Patengru, and it's titled Shima Two. Uh, it is a bronze piece, and it depicts a rabbit in somewhat of a whimsical pose. Uh, piece is approximately four feet tall, and has a value of $18,500. Uh, the intent is to have the item on loan beginning in November for a year while fundraising campaign is conducted. Uh, the cost to the town is only to ensure the piece, the, uh, cost of the piece itself, and the placement of it, and the plaques, and the base are all, uh, done by the, uh, Public Art Committee and/or the donor, uh, and not an expense associated with the town. Uh, so only a cost to us would be the insurance cost of $84, uh, and placement would be potentially in the, uh, Centennial Circle site. One of the six pieces is proposed to go there. Um, joining me this evening is also the Public Art Committee Chair, Sandy Thompson, in case you have any questions. And with that, I would answer any questions you might have.
All right, excellent, Mark, thank you very much. First, look for a motion on this, to, to move forward on this piece. Some, a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Um, any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
Should've asked. Any discussion, Vice Mayor?
Yes, when I first looked at this, I thought this belonged with the Easter eggs. Uh, but then I sit back and I look at this again, and it's gonna go in the Centennial, is this gonna go behind the guy, 'cause he's got a naked rear-end?
I'm just asking a question.
I'm not sure I can answer, answer that question, or if I should answer that question.
Yeah, but I mean, uh, otherwise, I think it deters from what the actual piece that's there now. Uh, I, I feel like that it kinda distracts from it, that's my personal opinion, but other than that, I hope he doesn't stand behind the guy.
I think one of the, uh, things that they are gonna propose is that the, the base, if you look at this, is only six inches tall, and so overall, the piece is four foot six off the ground, whereas the other piece, as you know, is substantially larger and much more elevated, so the intent was certainly not to overshadow power, thought was to enhance it.
I recall the, um, locations that we looked at maybe a month ago for the artwork were kinda on the perimeter. Exactly be added, I'm not sure if this would actually permanently be there, or they're just there to gain much attention as they do the fundraising, but if it is there, I think it's on the perimeter, if I remember right.
Correct, Mayor.
Nice plan.
That'd be much better, thank you.
Good. Any other questions on this item? All right, thanks for coming out, Sandy. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Mayor Six Zero?
All right.
I do.
Not going far, Mark, right? All right, next item, I'm going in right order, 12 here, update by Jerry Butler, Chair of the Greening of Downtown Committee regarding the next planned phase of plantings in Fountain Park, the status of developing vacant downtown landscaped lots, and consideration of a request to receive a refund of two, uh, $420 for monies previously paid for landscape plan review. Mark?
Uh, before I turn it over to Mr. Butler, just a couple of quick comments. The Greening Committee, as you know, has been very active over the last several years and continues to be so. Um, they're, been very successful in raising funds and continue to do so. They're now on their third commemorative column and are now anticipating perhaps even a fourth column. Uh, he may update me and say that they are definitely gonna plan a fourth column, but, um, the information he's gonna share with us evening is the plans that they have for this fall, which include not only development of Fountain Park, but also some updates and potential development for downtown lots, which was a part of the greening project as well. Um, and then, um, also talking a little bit about, um, a request that he's got for some refunds of funds that he paid, uh, associated with the, uh, landscaping plan for those downtown lots. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Butler.
All right, thank you, Mark. Welcome, Ms. Butler. How are you?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm fine.
Good.
Counsel? The, uh, tonight, it's really a two-pronged presentation, one is to bring you up to date as to what the Greening Committee has done in way of the greening of downtown, and as Mark said, and also requests a refund on a deposit, or a fee that we paid for a downtown First of all, I'd like to remind everyone who will be looking tonight is that, in the beginning, the greening of downtown was a part of the vision plan, it was approved almost a little over two years ago. The committee itself has been operating for the past two years. As you know, we started with no money, no staff, and it was simply a dream as a part of the vision plan. What we've accomplished in the last two years is we have now 35 community volunteers on our committee. We have raised $166,000 in donations and in-kind services. To date, we have in Fountain Park, 94 new trees. We have created a low-water demonstration garden with signs that tell people what they're looking at, in case they would like to plant those plants at their home. A wildflower garden. We have improved two islands in the park, and we have now, as Mark said, three commemorative columns. The accomplishments, as I mentioned, there are 94 trees, we did 40 near the performance pad, 18 trees east of the Veterans Memorial, and 36 trees along the interior walkway on the east side of the park, both east and a little bit to the north there. The two gardens, I mentioned earlier, we're proud to say that the low-water demonstration garden is being maintained by a volunteer master gardener group. The wildflower garden is being maintained by the Botanical Garden Club, and needless to say, it's the volunteers who made this happen. The two island improvements, Shorebird Island was the first one that we addressed last year. Also, we have cleaned up the Great Blue Heron Island on the west side of the park, and while we were there, there was already a beneficiary watching her eggs very carefully. Three commemorative columns have been installed, so that we can now acknowledge more donations as they come in. Now, as far as the fall 2011 coming up, we're prepared to add 40 more trees to the park, add some landscaping at the commemorative columns, as well as replace the gravel that's there with pavers, so that people can walk around and find their leaves a little easier. We're gonna do some landscaping near the performance pad, enhance Duck Island to the north, refurbish the gardens, we intend to go back and add some additional plants that we didn't get to last year, so that we can show all of the, um, low-water garden, or the plants that we had intended to last year. In the downtown corridor, we're prepared to have now a demonstration landscape project on an, on the Avenue of the Fountains, that will be temporary landscaping of three vacant lots between Chen's Restaurant and Chase Bank. We will also, we're planning to assist with the landscaping at the Centennial Circle. The 40 trees that I mentioned will be on the west side of the park, along the sidewalk, and I'm gonna say on the park side of the sidewalk, not the lake side of the sidewalk. And the reason for that is that there's probably not enough space in there, in enough locations between the sidewalk and the lake, to put the trees without disturbing possibly the liner of the lake and interfering with the mowing operations, uh, to keep the park looking nice. In the process of doing that, we're going to add shade to seven benches that are now sitting out there pretty much alone, and during the summertime, they get very, very Mentioned earlier, we're gonna add the pavers and landscaping at the column, at the commemorative columns. We have room for two, possibly three more columns in that location. Performance pad landscaping, we met this morning to try to refine the ideas that we have in mind. There will be, at each end of the seating area, there will be landscaping, remove the grass that's there, because it's hard to maintain, and we'll do something really special there, as well as, right beyond the performance pad, we intend to landscape that. A lot of this has to do with trying to make it more, um, the setting a little bit more soft and inviting for weddings and other events, uh, at the performance pad, put some color around that particular area. The third island, we're gonna add, uh, the third island in the gardens, we will, as I said, add more plants to the gardens, and we're gonna clean up Duck Island on the north side of the lake. Downtown vacant lot, the downtown corridor, on this slide is a picture of the lots that I was talking about between Chen's and Chase Bank. It's pretty austere right now. We have worked with the lot owners, and have also, we've got the design completed by Four Peaks Landscape. We have worked with the Platte 208 Property Owners Association, and they have agreed to take over the maintenance of this landscaped area, and Chaparral Water has agreed to provide the water at no cost to anyone for that, uh, to maintain those plants. Landscape plan is shown at the bottom of this slide. It involves some 19 trees, 25 shrubs, and five above-ground planters. The downtown corridor, Centennial Circle landscaping, we intend to be a landscape partner with that, as those plans continue to develop. Exactly what we're gonna be able to do remains to be seen, but we're all, we're pulling this together for this fall, for the activities. But there's more to come, we're not going to be done by the Centennial. More improvements are in the planning stage at Fountain Park, the downtown corridor, as you heard Tuesday night, an urban demonstration garden and learning center is part of the commi, the committee activities. So, there's a lot of things still to come, but like everything else, it's a function depending on money. We're fortunate that many, our accomplishments have been made possible by the major contributors that I've shown on this slide. Without them, we would not be this far along, we would not have the $166,000. This fall, we're prepared to invest in the community another $45,000 of these, uh, greenery improvements. Now, this brings me to the third point. In the downtown vacant lot proposal, we were required by policy to get a permit or, and pay a fee to have the landscaping of the vacant lots looked at. And we did that, we understand why, the town has that policy, but it probably was not set up with the idea that landscaping would be donated, and it might only be temporary until the land, or the lots become, developed for commercial activities. What we were formally requesting is if the fee can be waived and returned back to the committee, that represents, the $420 represents about three trees, so as far as the return on the investment, what I've learned is that money does not grow on trees, but it does take money to grow trees. So, with that, I respectfully request the council to consider returning the 420, so that we can invest it in return in the, put it back in the ground. And with that, I will end and try to respond to questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jerry, thanks very much. Any questions for Mr. Butler? I'll look for a motion on the $420, and we can talk more about the update. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hanson?
Yes, real quick, um, it is so commendable on your plan for those vacant lots, I mean, to get Chaparral to do the water and 208 to, to do the maintenance, that's, that's great. And that being said, I'll make the motion to refund the permit fees previously paid, a $420 by the Greening of Downtown Committee for a landscaping plan review for downtown vacant lots, to beautify our downtown.
Thank you.
All right, first and second, any questions? Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Yeah, Jerry, I think, great presentation, it's nice to, I mean, it's already been two years, it's hard to believe, it's already been two years, but I just get so excited seeing what volunteers are doing, and this is just one example of it, it happens all around town, but this is just a tremendous project that everybody can see every day, and the shade that we'll have on the sidewalks and the benches in the summertime is gonna be tremendous. And now, you've got the lot owners and Platte 208 cooperating and working together with them, that's tremendous, and it's not a small, um, expense that Chaparral City Water's helping with, with the, the taps and the, those vacant lots, and, um, the support of every, I mean, your list, even just on page 79 of our packet is the major donors, and that's, that's very lengthy, so thank you to all the donors, um, from all of us here at town council and the community, thanks to everybody, and thanks, Jerry, for helping to, um, lead and project manage the, the projects, and... and all the great ideas that have come from everybody else. It's tremendous to see it happening. So we got a motion and a second? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six, zero.
All right, don't spend it all in one place. All right, great. Item thirteen, presentation of Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce with discussion and possible direction to staff regarding fiscal year 2011-12 funding for tourism. Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. During the fiscal year eleven-twelve budget, we appropriated funds to continue contracts that we have had for the past four years with the Chamber of Commerce on the, for tourism. Those agencies are, with the decrease in available revenues for those agencies, contracts have been reduced by twenty percent. We have here a presentation by the council, Sean White, the president of the Chamber of Commerce first, and then followed by Francesca Caroza, to make a presentation to the council on tourism.
Great, thanks, Julie. Welcome, Mr. White. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good, Mayor.
Thanks for volunteering, leading the chamber.
Absolutely. Just a correction, I'm actually the chairperson for the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, and I appreciate the opportunity that the mayor and vice mayor and the council has provided for the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight with Francesca Caroza, who will make a presentation to the council with respect to the Fountain Hills and Fort McDowell Visitors Bureau, and the, the funding and the programs that we have in store for 2011, 2012. But first, I'd like to thank again the mayor, vice mayor, and council members, and the town of Fountain Hills for appropriating funds, once again this year, to the Fountain Hills and Fort McDowell Visitors Bureau for the continued tourism program. I'd also like to thank the, the council for their, for recognizing the importance of tourism within our community, not only to the businesses, but also to the residents, in attracting people into our town and raising sales tax revenues. Obviously, the chamber values the partnership that we have with the town from an economic development, economic vitality standpoint. We appreciate that the town recognizing, recognizes that tourism is a component, one of the components of this idea of economic development and vitality. And we appreciate the trust and confidence that the town has in the Fountain Hills Visitors Bureau, Fort McDowell Visitors Bureau. We look forward, obviously, to that continued partnership as well. But with that said, I've got to say, I've been in a lot of meetings since taking over as chair in July, and some of those meetings have been with you folks as well. And I'm, I'm really excited about this coming year. We've got a lot of programs, a lot of new ideas, fresh ideas, and folks that have come in and made some presentations to, not only to, to chamber leadership, but I think to town leadership as well, and I've certainly been impressed by what I've seen so far. So I'm, I'm really excited about that. I'm excited to be a part of the chamber and a part of the Visitors Bureau. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Francesca Caroza, who will make the presentation to the council.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Good evening, Francesca. How are you?
Good evening. I'm just fine.
Great.
Let me see if I can make this work. I'll be better.
That microphone might actually lower if you need.
How's that? Is that all right?
Perfect.
Okay, here we go. Just, oh, we double-clicked. I've got to move it to that one.
Mark's coming to the rest. He's our, he's our AV guy, technical.
There we go. Oh, thank you.
See if it comes up.
Yes, it did.
F-five.
Oh, F-five, that's right. Thank you very much, Mark. And, Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you and tell you about what the Visitors Bureau is doing and plans to do in the coming year. Mark McDermott had another commitment that he couldn't break, and that's why I'm here in his, in his place, which I'm delighted about. So first, let me say, and to kind of reiterate what, what Sean said, tourism is really a component of a comprehensive economic development plan. And we see, so our role is to stimulate sales at a sustainable level so our local businesses really thrive, and that means really getting people here. And indirectly, what this, you know, the goal of, let's face it, the goal of tourism is to, is to create sales tax revenue. I mean, else why would, why would we invest in if it wasn't to help the economy of, of our community? And then also, another goal is to really have a healthy community, one where people really like to live here, they like to work here, and they like to play here. And because of that, when people visit, we believe that they will return here and want to invest by living here and also by working here. So I have a slide up now, and it's, it is from the last economic impact, it's a visitor impact study that was done in 2006 by Dean Runyon, to look at what is, what is the value of, of tourism, what is the value of visitors? And at that time, we had equivalent of a hundred and three million dollars spent by visitors in, between Fountain Hills and Fort McDowell. And for Fountain Hills, the spending and then earnings were around sixty-three million, which in turn turns into about one point three million dollars in sales tax revenue. And that was done when the actual local sales tax was two percent. So although the economy's changed, I think it's clear that visitors do have an impact. I mean, they spend money and they, most of the time, don't influence your infrastructure that much, where, you know, because they don't have that difficult of an impact on it. So that, that does, we look at that as being one of the elements, and also, I think it's, it's important that when people come here, they do have a great experience. So the objective of, of the Visitors Bureau is to position Fountain Hills as a vibrant base camp destination, where we have a diverse number of assets. I mean, our town is an amazing kind of gateway to the Sonoran Desert. Our downtown, there's events going on all the time, we have people visiting for that, we have golf, we have some of the best golf courses in the valley. And as a result of that, we did, we did develop and, and kind of come up with the concept of the Sonoran Desert Golf Trail, which are six courses that people can play, they can stay, unpack once, and then play all of the courses within a ten-to-fifteen minute drive of one another. And we feel that that is unique in the valley to have a golf trail. And I think because of that particular product, we found that our relationship with the golf courses became much more collaborative and cooperative. So we're, we're excited about that prospect because it, it does meet another one of our objectives, which is to increase overnight stays and get people in this community staying here and playing here. And the two packaging partners we have are Arizona Travel and Trails, a local agency, as most people know Roxanne and Hank, but also Golf Zoo will also be a marketing partner for us. And Golf Zoo is, you know, they get thousands of hits on their site, so this is a great partnership and synergy that'll, that'll occur. We also have the desert experiences, and our outdoor adventures are tremendous. McDowell Mountain Regional Park we can, we have to promote, we have the Sonoran Preserve, we have the Scottsdale Trails, we have our park. So there's a lot of things that really are important here. Our festivals are renowned all over the, even in the world, of people coming to our two main art festivals. We have a museum, we have a hundred pieces of public art. Our, you know, this is a wedding destination, and I'll talk more about that, that we're really finding that, that is a niche market that we are really beginning to see that we can cultivate and get brides here. And I, before the meeting, I gave you a, a copy of the Wedding Magazine that we have, we did take a cover position, and the last time that was done was in 2005, and that's the, the cover and then the page is in there, which all of those, the information is about the community center and the park. And to date, I believe they have already scheduled twenty-four weddings in the park. When we went to that bridal show, and the, the company we're working with, Arizona's Finest Wedding Sites and Services, they were distributing that magazine along with another one. And Brian and Reno both said that it really, I'm sure it drove a lot of traffic, because people don't necessarily think of us as a wedding destination until they're like, wow, that's, that would be really great. So, and, and as I said, we do want to increase overnight stays, of course, that is one of our goals, and we think some of the things we're, we're putting in place are helping that in the, if the Sonoran Desert Golf Trail, as that takes off, that will help, as well as weddings. When you get a wedding and there's multiple visits that people come by, and then there are the, the stays. We have always looked at, you know, trying to encourage non-resident day trips and resident, you know, and also resident patronage of Fountain Hills businesses. Another goal is to just build understanding in, in the citizenry that tourism is, really helps to build a healthy, vibrant community. In order to do some of these things, what we really are interested in doing this year is to revitalize the Fountain Hill brand and image. And in, in that, it's like to really kind of show the true colors of Fountain Hills and all of the really, the vibrancy and the, the sense of community we have here, the sense, it's like a friendly resort-like community where, where people are really alive and active. So we are really looking at that as being very, a critical element in our strategy this year. We want to refresh and enhance our Fountain Hills-Fort McDowell brand, and really the Fountain Hills brand, which is, is so vital. You know, our fountain is beautiful, and it is, it's kind of the spirit of the community. And one of the first steps in that is we, we do plan to launch a new website that will be a destination portal that can support a lot of the marketing efforts in Fountain Hills, so that you will have like the opportunity for people who want to just come and visit, who want to live here, who want to look at business opportunities here. And we'll implement an integrated digital online marketing strategy. A bureau our size, a budget our size, it's really important to really be where people are now, and that's online. That is your first impression. You know, when people hear about Fountain Hills, what's the next thing they're going to do if they haven't heard about it by being online? They're going to Google it. And when they get to the website, they need to have a good experience. They need to be able to get around on that website and find what they want, and make that their first stop to learn more, to connect, and then to come here and take an action, which would be to visit, invest. So we're, we are focusing on that, and we're really focusing on search engine optimization for that, because the most important thing is you have to be found. And that's, things have changed from five years ago when we first developed our websites, and they were like little walking brochures. Now it's all a really game of getting in the rankings and getting there and getting people to, to participate on your site and have credibility. We will continue to have an ongoing focus on our art fairs, our events, the golf, the golf markets continues to be good revenue that comes in on a continuing basis, and we, and then get the high-value visitors. We will further develop the wedding markets niche. We have some things planned in that area. We're very fortunate that a, an event planner and a wedding planner, a certified wedding planner now has a location in Fountain Hills and is really, really actively promoting this as a weddings destination, and is working in cooperation with the community, with Reno at the community center and Brian. And so we're, we're just brainstorming some ways we can get more wedding planners and event planners here, but people to know about the destination and look at some of our properties. And as you know, Copperwind just opened, which is a beautiful destination as well for a wedding. And we are, we seek cooperative opportunities with the golf courses so that they pay portions of the advertising. We have a media buy that is participating with the, with the golf courses. And with the artist gallery, we have Arizona Collector's Guide, which is the, an annual publication, but we have about eight or ten pages about our destination. Two years ago, when Jenny and I looked at that, that was only, we, our, the artist gallery was just attached to Scottsdale. Now Fountain Hills is its own destination with lots of artists participating. So that was, that's a very good, that's the kind of things we like to do because it's, it leverages our dollars, but it's also what our businesses are saying they want to participate Another thing that we, we do is we are accessing our group markets through trade industries. We're a member of Meeting Planners International, which are all the meeting planners and are in, in that group. It is a networking opportunity where you can meet these people and participate with them and try to bring them to your location. And we have, we also are part of Arizona Guides, and we also participate with a number of other people. I keep wanting to look that way, even though it's right in front of me. Forgive me for that, I'm not used to this. So I'm, I'm really excited about our wedding markets. And then now I have this where we have our other affiliations with Arizona Office of Tourism, other CVBs like the Greater Phoenix CVB, Scottsdale CVB, the Certified Tourism Ambassadors Network. These are all ways that we can leverage our dollars and also promote our destination in cooperation with them. A lot of times, we will participate in fam trips with Scottsdale or Phoenix, and they will be bringing people who want to have a conference here. One of the conferences that will be coming here in 2013 is the American Trails Conference, which will bring about six hundred people to the area. And that was a fairly big conference to get. We worked with the Radisson, of course, and the Holiday Inn, Gary LeVov, and we had the organizers come here, and we did a fam trip with them. And we were very fortunate that we got the date, that we got this, that will bring all of these people who are trail builders and sponsors, and so it's, it's going to be a great event. Just last week, there was the Ianta Conference at the Radisson-Fort McDowell, and that was what we, we partner with the hotels, because we really don't have our own like tour department, you know, where we, you know, we'll cultivate that. But we're available to go on fams and do other things like that with them. So we also do the bridal show on January primarily, and we do like an Arizona Highways and AAA staycation kind of trade show that they have. In terms of our collateral or publications, we have the Visitors Guide that you're probably all familiar with, and I think I've handed that out to you, the Dining Guide, which was the inspiration of Lori Gary, and we've got that going, and it's one of the most popular things that we, we hand out, and we did a print version, we put some of our nonprofits on the back. And this is really great. I mean, people are so surprised when you give it to them that we have all these eating establishments, but it's, it's a very, very useful tool. And the Calendar Events and the Wedding Guide, which you also have, which showcases, it's, we're a one-stop shop here in Fountain Hills. In terms of digital marketing, our new website, we will enhance the content and the interactivity. We will make sure that our key words are the kinds of things that people are searching, the words that people use to search for destinations and for places to go. It will have a blog and a news article platform, simplified targeted navigation, beautiful pictures, but most importantly, we want to be found. It will have video and photography. These are the ways you get rankings on Google. It's, it's a whole nother world out there. It'll have commenting features and, and social bookmarking tools. There'll be advertising sponsorship opportunities, marketing tools and resources for businesses, mobile website integration. As you know, most people now carry smartphones and iPads. So you have to have a, your site be able to, to work on those applications. You don't maybe just need a completely different site, but you need something that's going to be, could be optimized for that type of device, like you don't want to use Flash, or you want to scale it down so that people aren't getting stuck with all kinds of things taking time to load. And naturally, the analytics are critical to keep, on a dynamic basis, to keep changing the, the site. We, on our new site, we will have a very strong database management system so that we can segment people into, you know, capture their names and email addresses, and then send them targeted emails and campaigns. We hope to do that in a very, you know, very efficient way to, so we can capture as many people and, and really intrigue them to come out here in a quick way. Social media will continue to be important, and then we have travel site affiliations. TripAdvisor is, I'm sure everybody's gone to TripAdvisor at least once to plan your trips and vacations. Well, they offer CVBs a sponsorship opportunity where, although it is user-driven content, you actually can have banner ads on there, you can post events and specials, so, and your content, Visitor Bureau content will come up first. So having some control of the TripAdvisor page is really a pretty good deal. And the A position is a golf, a Golf Writers Consortium where they, they write about our courses. And we also look to cultivate reciprocal links with other websites. Terms of our advertising for this year, we're doing a few things that we hope will let... Terms of our advertising for this year, we're doing a few things that we hope will, that will be multipurpose. Phoenix Magazine, we have a six-plus page advertorial or advertising section in there with a full-page ad. And this will be in the November issue, which is Best Places in the Valley to Live. Their circulation is about 75,000 direct and then when you look pass along, they estimated around 160,000 or 190,000. Another part of this buy, it is Fountain Hills businesses are given a rate that is substantially lower than anything they could buy on their own. It is better than a 12-time rate. It's 50% of a one-time rate, which is a great deal for putting an advertising placement, reaching that caliber of reader in, in the valley. So that's an opportunity, plus we have a PDF of it that's downloadable that we can reprint and reuse and put on our sites. Those things are very good things to get. And we also have a buy with, and this is a co-op buy in conjunction with the golf courses in Golf Magazine, which is the premier golfer's magazine, national magazine. We will have a cover of the Arizona section and it will feature the Sonoran Desert Golf Trail. We also will have an e-blast to 80,000 subscribers with that. We think that that is going to be a tremendous boost to the golf trail and our participants. It didn't cost the Visitors Bureau that much because of our, the golf courses participating and sharing the cost with us. Naturally, we'll be in the Arizona Visitors Guide, the Valley Guide, which is an in-room magazine, and that's, we do that with some AOT help in there. We have, we do have an inset of the Town of Fountain Hills on the Phoenix map, that's a 280,000 circulation. Arizona Meetings and Events, we have a presence in there and we will do some banner advertising to reach the meeting planning market. A small add in Inside Golf to reach Canadian golfers. And Arizona Finest Weddings, I've talked about that. The Collector's Guide in Key Arizona, which is a rich media tourism format. The, the, the print publication goes to 30,000, they print 30,000, but it's their online presence that is so critical because of the way they have optimized their site. If you put in keywords like "visit Fountain Hills," they will come up first or second, you know, right after the advertising page. And they have a lot of video, they have really nice presence for us and our pages on there look great. So that's a very good one. And then our fulfillment, we do produce the Visitors Guide and how that is done is that it is done through the support of the businesses, their, by their buying ads, usually we, we don't have to spend too much money on that. We produce 40,000 and those are distributed by Certified Folder in 400-plus locations all over the valley in high visitor trafficked areas. We also are in the airport, hotels, car rentals, CVBs, information centers and businesses. We, our affiliations are of course with the Town of Fountain Hills, Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation, Arizona Office of Tourism, Western Association of CVBs, Greater Phoenix CVB, Scottsdale CVB, and Trade Industry Associations. You could tell where my passions are. And this is a budget overview of where our funding comes from. Large percentage is graciously given to us by, by you. Our tribal grant is 45,000. Chamber funding is 50. State grant, that's Prop 302, 8,000. And co-ops that I was talking about come to about, about 5,000. We have done a little modification on that and I've given that to you in your other packet. And how we spend our money is on the branding, the advertising and PR, doing our, putting our websites together, our search engine optimization. I'm kind of out of slides in this packet. And our, let's see, uh-huh, our principal deliverables, new website, new destination brand and launch, and our print advertising and media relations, consumer impressions, 20 million. How that's derived is you, you look at how much coverage you get on non-paid media and you look at the circulation and there's a multiplier and you estimate that. It becomes more difficult with online because a lot of those people will not tell you how many users they have, so sometimes I don't even count that, except when I, when I found it, like AZ Central says they got a million and a half people. Anyway, and with that, I'd like to thank you and then open it up if you have any questions for me. I will do my best to answer them.
Good. Hey Francesca, great job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you didn't look over your shoulder at the slides too much, you did a great job. Yep. And yeah, we can see if there are any speaker cards on this item.
We have Q. Mayor Allen Magazine followed by Phyllis Kern.
So Francesca will just see, listen to the speakers and then probably ask you some questions after the speakers come up. Thanks. Who's up first?
Allen Magazine.
Welcome, Allen. How are you?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. I do not speak for SPAC, I speak as an individual. Let me start by complimenting Francesca on her excellent presentation. She started out by saying that tourism is a component of economic development and I certainly concur in that. And I think a lot of the recommendations that the chamber is making make a lot of sense, but I don't think it will brand the town. To brand the town has to be differentiated from all the other towns in Arizona and all the towns around us. And every town in Arizona wants tourism and they want to increase retail and so on. That's not to say that there shouldn't be an attempt to do that. I think it's very worthwhile and it could very well bear fruit, but I don't think it's going to begin to solve the town's problems. We're in a downward spiral in terms of finances. You've all been part of that. There's no indication that's going to change anytime soon. I think tourism and increased retail could help, but right now we're in a downward spiral in retail. Four restaurants have closed in the last three weeks. That's not a healthy sign. There are hundreds of what's called, what are called economic clusters in this country. There are cities with many economic clusters, there are towns that are an economic cluster. Let me give you one example. Napa Valley has an economic cluster. It's a wine cluster. Now, what does that mean? It means they have wine growers, they have people who specialize in corkage, they're experts in corkage, they have PR people who all they know is wine, they have attorneys that all they know is laws that relate to wine. They all meet regularly, there's cross-fertilization, there's innovation as a result. Innovation comes from all of these people talking to each other, whether it's over coffee, at the country club, over golf, whatever it is. And so Napa Valley has flourished for years as a wine cluster. This town, in my opinion, needs to look at what kind of an industry, which would be an innovative industry, would create jobs and bring about the kind of positive change that we need. Let me give you a couple of examples. We had a presentation earlier about a piece of sculpture. There's a lot of art in this town, a lot of people interested in art. Healthcare. This town already has a lot of the benefits of good healthcare. It has a small campus, healthcare campus. We have a great and clean environment. We're not in the middle of the city. We have trails. What if this town were to become known as the, as the healthcare capital of the valley? That to me is branding. And I'm not suggesting that that's what it should be. It would take some research, some analysis. This is done all over the country. Part and parcel of this, as Francesca said, would be tourism, bringing more people in, but the kind of cluster, economic cluster that I'm talking about would not be, it wouldn't be up and down depending upon economic times, or it shouldn't be if it's done right. For example...
If you would, Mr. Magazine, start wrapping it up.
Okay.
Get you three minutes.
Oh, three minutes? I didn't know that.
Let you go a little over.
Okay.
Wrap it up if you would.
Bring in medical technology facilities, doctors to fill gaps that we now have, perhaps look at a 50 or 100-bed hospital. Durable medical equipment suppliers, high-tech facilities for all kinds of things that can be done to lure people to the town and over time create an economic cluster that would benefit the town for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Phyllis Kern.
She's going to pass. Thank you. Anyone else? There was just two, two speaker cards?
Yes.
All right, thanks. All right, Francesca, Sean, we'll probably hit you with some questions now. Thank you again for a great presentation. Counsel, any questions before we consider a motion or directions to staff? House Member Hanson.
I just wanted to quick comment on the branding discussion because a few months ago, we had quite a lengthy discussion about the branding issue. And basically, I think we kind of concluded that we don't have to have just one single brand. What we, we could have various brands depending on what it is. You know, the tourism would have a certain brand and business would have a certain brand, that type of thing. But the important thing is that they all complement each other and we're coordinated. And I think that's kind of where we had left that discussion. So just saying that tourism is working on a brand isn't to preclude additional discussion in other areas.
Good. Again, this is for the agenda item and that, you're right on. Just so we're clear, we had our presentation, we'll have some discussions, some questions and give staff possible direction. And before we conclude this item, if we would, Julie, maybe you could let counsel know before we wrap up this item, what our next steps are and the timing and, I know if something's coming to a work study and some other things, so. But before we get to that, what's, any questions for Francesca or Sean related to the presentation? Councilmember Leger?
Thank you, Sean and Francesca, for your presentation. And thank you, Citizen Allen, for your, your input. As I ponder this, this funding and look at the deliverables here, I've gone back to look at our town's goals for this fiscal year, which are driven by our community-driven strategic plan. And specifically, as we look at our, our council goals for this year, we talked specifically about branding, branding Fountain Hills. We talked specifically about an enhanced website to complement branding and to complement tourism as they all work together, as well as continuing to use a variety of media. I think that your presentation basically has nailed that. Our citizen made some, some excellent points about clustering and about, and about branding. I had an opportunity, and if either one of you want to chime in, I think it would be important to spend a few minutes on this. The chamber has been collaborating with, and the Business Vitality Advisory Council has been collaborating with some folks, some, some branding experts that have shared their expertise pretty much gratis and looking for an opportunity to do some branding. And I was as skeptical about the branding as, as the notion about just pinpointing it to tourism. And I found that the product that they're sharing with us and the approach that would be taken by the charge of, of our Visitors Bureau is a branding of Fountain Hills and that the website is really marketing Fountain Hills under the guise of tourism. And one step further, Mr. Magazine, excellent point about gap analysis and what we need to bring to this town for financial sustainability. And perhaps you've had an opportunity or not, our Economic Development Administrator is, is spot-on in terms of some of your recommendations, in terms of recommendations she's made to this group and people that she's currently marketing with in, in healthcare and in some of the segments that you, that you mentioned. So I feel that what I've heard tonight lines up very nicely with, with the council goals, which once again are influenced and guided by our strategic plan. Francesca, is there anything, or Sean, that you can add about the branding in terms of its, its focus? I'll just let you take over from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
I think I may chime in as well, but one thing I've learned from sitting in on these branding meetings with the experts, so to speak, is the branding effort is, is very organic. It's not something that necessarily they have created, it's something that they have come to our town as outsiders and they've driven over the hill and they've visited some of the establishments that we have here and some, you know, taken advantage of some of the amenities and they've provided us with a platform, a branding platform, so to speak. So I, I don't know that it's necessarily just focused on tourism, but they have put a lot of effort into finding out what is Fountain Hills from an outside, outsider's perspective. And Francesca may, may have some more to, to chime in on with respect to that, but that's my personal view of what we've seen so far. Again, it's, it's something I'm, I'm personally very excited about. I know the other leadership at the chamber is very excited about it as well. So with that, maybe Francesca has something else to add.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about that because it, we really do feel that the branding company we were working with, the way they looked at it was almost in terms of what Mr. Magazine was talking about, is where you do get this kind of clustering idea, where there's synergy because, and I could use an example of either, like you have a chef is, looks, starts coming here and then suddenly you have the produce that he wants to use is being grown here. And then you have something like, and I'll use an example of like La Scala Creamery, who really is committed to fresh ingredients and things like that and wants to use really organic products. So you kind of create a synergy and you get some best practices going. I would say the brand company that we worked with looks at themselves more like, you know, like looking at the whole picture and not looking at it as being just about people coming and visiting and then leaving, but really raising the bar and giving this place a real, our sense of place. And when people want to visit a place, they come here to visit it and they, they love it and they return and then they want to invest here because there's a really good feeling and there's, there's things happening. So a brand is not just a logo and a slogan. A brand is really, it has to be organic as, as Sean said, and it really has to emerge from the people. And in looking around, I think they've captured a lot of the essence of this place as being, it has a lot of, it has a sense of family, it has a sense of community. It has not a, I would say like a casual elegance about it and it has a sense of renewal and, and celebration and rejoicing. And we have, we have a lot of those things that go on here and we need to translate that into it because if, if we are going to become an economic cluster, if we are going to become a Napa or let's say a solar industry cluster, the people that are, are running those companies want, they want to live a place, in a place that has that kind of feeling. They're going to start locating here and then it's going to evolve. But we need to give ourselves a sense of place and, and have our values shine through. And in, in 2005, when we did the strategic plan, all that way back then, I think our citizens, many of them said they wanted to have a vibrant community. They wanted, they were, they liked the idea of a vibrant downtown. They liked the idea of having things happening, not overwhelmingly, but overwhelmingly things happening all over the place. They wanted to be them, what we, what our values are. And that's the importance of a brand. Does that answer it? And that we, it is considered. And it is considered in how we want to position that website. We do want it to be a destination portal so that it can be more than just pretty pictures and come and visit. It would be, you know, really nice to incorporate if you wanted to open a business here, here's a whole bunch of, you know, ways to do it if you want to live here. If you want to just come and visit and play, but in an integrated fashion. And then maybe it can, it can grow legs and microsites come out of it in our places. So we're, we're trying to think strategically and I'd love to work with, with Mr. Magazine on talking about economic clusters. That is my background is, I do some economics in my background and I think it could be very exciting together to do like fam trips, bringing CEOs and people here and working with Lori and telling about this tremendous town. So I'm up for it.
Councilmember Ralke.
One of the things that we had discussed during the executive budget committees and through the discussions here was to have, when dealing with the funding for the chamber, was to have a comprehensive plan, you know, where are we going, something that's going to encompass all the things that we're all talking about, that we all think about when, individually, when we think of Fountain Hills and why we live here. And I think, you know, through the meetings for BEVAC, through meetings that we've had here at Town Hall with, with staff and folks from the chamber, I think we're well along that path and I'm very excited and I think we have some fresh outlooks, fresh ideas. And it's looking very promising from what we're seeing. I've had... I've had opportunities to see some of these branding examples and we're looking forward to seeing some more of that at the work study. So thank you for everything.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hanson.
I'd just like to thank both Sean and Francesca for the presentation. I think it's really important to let the community know what you all are really doing and it's clearly evident that you've come a long way in just the last few years. And so that being said, I'd like to make a motion.
We're looking at giving some direction to staff, so I'd like to have a little more dialogue, if you don't mind, but you can, you may, you certainly may.
Okay. Move to authorize staff to prepare contract for Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce Tourism and disbursement of funds.
All right.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion? Good. I like, I like too what I heard very much and I think, in listening to what Allen said, I think it's more, I think, I think it's a multi-pronged approach with the economic development. And I think, I think most of us recognize that. I know Lori's working on a lot of the things that I've seen communicated as needs and where we need to go and building a daytime population is the right sustainable model to keep our businesses afloat. And they're struggling now as obviously is evidence in the continuing economic depression we're in here and the restaurants closing is just really tough to see, but we need to have more daytime population. There's evidence of a couple of businesses that have good daytime population near our restaurants and near some of our businesses and I think they help a great, great deal. So I know on that prong, economic development and job growth, we're working on that. Of course, the economy has a part to play, but we certainly can, are proactive in that area. And then there's no getting around the Fountain Hills is definitely a destination. It's a gorgeous, beautiful place. And I remember what Vern Swabak told us when we went through our downtown, or our vision plan for the downtown, is he said, "Best places to visit are first the best places to live." And not just because we have the best people in the world here, but because we have this amazing setting that those folks did capture and a lot of their ideas that they first gave us with the branding ideas. And they did, I don't know if those technically are called clusters, but they actually clustered, look like clusters of each different segment of business and vitality and music and arts. And they, maybe we're going down the right path, but this motion here will get us started to where we can support some tangible things together with some good measurements because we also need to make sure that we're effective with the spending that we're going to be doing. So I think it's a great presentation. I think I've seen a lot more engagement with the hotel industry as well with the visitors' bureau, which is tremendous because I think, I don't know if that's something that's, I just seems like destination marketing, you really need to get your hotels engaged and they can really tell us how effective destinations and how many people are staying overnight. And of course, the partnership with Fort McDowell is of continuing importance as well, not because they're just a great destination, but they're a great partner. But those are some of my thoughts. I thought the presentations were good. I like the energy and like Sean said, I'm really excited about some of the ideas coming forward. Down here, Dennis, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have to compliment the presentation. That was the best presentation that I've seen from the chamber ever, and it was quite refreshing and I appreciate that. Along with that, what I would actually like to see, I mean, there's no doubt you've thought all your way through the new, the new channels that we're going to be going through. And I look at the budget and I see that the town funds a hundred, is going to be funding, possibly funding a hundred and three thousand plus dollars and the tribal grant is forty five thousand and the chamber funds fifty. If this is such an important aspect to the town, I would like to see the chamber step up a little higher and maybe fund a little closer to what, or to maybe even match the funds that the town is putting in. I think it would be a lot more palatable to me if I could see a little more aggressive help from the chamber. If we're going to put our best foot forward, I'd like to see the chamber also financially step up. Thank you once again for the presentation. It was outstanding.
Good. Any leading? All right, more questions? Councilmember Hanson.
And following up on what Dennis had mentioned, I think probably in that discussion, we'd want to look at some of the contributions the chamber makes in kind too, as far as the facilities and some of the staff too, to put that into the mix.
So the fifth, in this new presentation we had, it broke out the expenditures and it talks about fifty thousand management administration. I'm assuming that's the chamber tourism effort funding, but there may be, you're thinking there may be additional expenditures from the chamber, may not be in here. Yeah.
Mayor, just one last point.
Councilmember Ralke.
Thank you. And I would encourage the chamber and staff to work together to perhaps give us updates. I realize that the chamber does provide us with quarterly reports, written reports, but to come in and provide us perhaps updates as to how things are going in not only educating the council, but of course our residents as to what the chamber's doing with the tourism dollars. Thank you.
Obviously, we did budget less this year for many, many things. I think what I heard from some of the feedback and also Mr. Magazine is not necessarily against anything or, but it's all about putting your resources in the right spots since they're very limited. And so that's where the effectiveness has to come in. So sometimes the tourism is a little squishy about how do you measure eyeballs on this and editorial value on that, but I think we're going in the right direction with what we've seen thus far. And we've got the motion here. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Good, thanks. Thank you very much, Sean and Francesca.
Thank you.
All right, item fourteen, discussion with possible direction to staff relating to the annual twenty-five dollar per unit commercial fire inspection fee as adopted in the fiscal year ten eleven, fee schedule. That be eleven twelve fee schedule? Probably eleven twelve fee schedule. But I don't think that's really important. Welcome there, Mr. Roberts. How are you?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm fine. Mayor Schlemm and council. At a previous council meeting, you had provided direction to us to return with you with some options regarding the annual fire inspection fee to possibly come up with something that might be a little bit more equitable. And in working with the finance department, we've come up with three different options that we kind of distilled down to. I'll go over those really quickly with you. Option number one would be to leave it as is, as we currently are with the twenty-five dollar fee per unit. And some of the pros for that is it's a fairly nominal charge of the twenty-five dollars a year. It's very easy to administer, there's no additional entries required, it's the same across the board. The cons on that one are there's that perception of inequality because of the smaller businesses are getting charged the same fee as the larger businesses. So option two would be a fee per unit based on square footage. And so you can see there that anything under ten thousand square feet would have that base rate of twenty-five dollars. Anything up to twenty-five thousand square feet would go up to a fifty dollars and above that would be a hundred dollar fee. And the pros on that would be the fee is based on square footage rather than a flat fee, so the larger buildings would get a higher fee. Of course, they take longer to inspect as well. It would be, that perception of inequality would be lessened. The downside to that is each unit would have to be measured and that isn't really a huge downside. That would probably be, you know, overcome in just a few cycles. We probably pretty much have square footages of every building. And that fee would have to be selected by the firefighters to put into the immune system, which would not be a big, big problem for us. Option number three would be a fee per building based on square footage. And the fees that proposed are under ten thousand square feet would be a hundred dollars. Ten thousand, twenty-five thousand square feet would be two hundred and fifty dollars. And over twenty-five thousand square feet would be four hundred and fifty dollars. And that would, as far as the pros would be, the larger buildings would be paying a higher rate, so that equality issue would be taken care of. And the cons would be each building needs to be measured again and it's a little bit more difficult to administer, although we can certainly overcome that. So together with the finance department and the fire department, we recommend option number two, to keep that fee on a per-unit base, but go with the square footage to try to make it more equitable. And so I also just want to reiterate the importance of the annual safety surveys or inspections. The main thing right there is the service benefits the property owners through prevention of fire and accidents that can threaten life and property. And that really is the number one reason that we do this. And we feel like we do get good mitigation as far as emergency incidents are definitely lessened by us being in there and making sure those fire systems are working. Another benefit is an opportunity for our firefighters to get in there. Once again, if there is an incident, we need to be able to know what that building looks like and it helps us to mitigate that problem better. And the other big benefit we've talked about before is ISO ratings, which a robust inspection program really does help. It helped us to go from a four to a three. And just in talking with the ISO folks, not all insurance companies for fire insurance use ISO ratings, but those that do, the average savings to a business would be about a penny per hundred dollars of value of that building. And just to kind of put that in perspective, a sprinkler system that goes into a commercial building does just about that same benefit. So it really is a pretty good benefit. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Randy. Any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, Mayor, one. Gordon Pitsenberger.
All right, thank you. Mountain Gordon, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Mayor, council, I just really don't have too many comments other than I just would like to see if Randy could clarify the square foot charge. The way I understood it is per unit. Is that correct?
We can get to that. Why don't you just finish your comments? We'll make sure we get some answers. Thanks.
So if that's the case and we're charging twenty-five dollars per unit that is under ten, ten thousand square feet is the way I understood them, the building that my partner and I have, there would be no change because we all, we have small units of two hundred square feet, two hundred and fifty, up to five hundred square feet. So every, so we would still be paying the same fee and across the street, the bowling alley would still be paying, well, they'd be actually probably be paying less, I believe. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Pitsenberger. All right, Randy, on that, just to clarify, option two, it's a fee per unit based on square footage of the unit?
Correct. And the vast majority of units in Fountain Hills would be under ten thousand square feet and would incur that twenty-five dollar fee. And of course, a larger building would incur a larger fee because it takes longer to inspect those buildings.
Okay. And was that, do you know offhand, was that, was this scale similar to other communities and how they did it? Obviously, we looked at that a little bit last time.
Right. All communities pretty much charge fire fees. Just about all cities and towns do. All cities and towns do not charge an annual inspection fee, however. Just a few samples would be Queen Creek, they go from a high of a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year for a larger, more hazardous occupancy down to a low of eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents for the smallest and less hazardous occupancies. The city of Mesa, their high fee for their larger, more hazardous occupancies is four hundred and fifty dollars a year and their lowest is a hundred and fifty dollars a year. The city of Chandler charges just a flat fee of forty dollars. The city of Glendale charges the flat fee of two hundred and seven dollars. So those are just kind of a sampling for you.
Okay, thanks, Randy. And the fire fee that you mentioned, is that something we charge here?
Well, as a fire fee, we're, you know, we have a lot of fees across the board. Just this, this fee we're talking about is for just the annual inspection fee.
And what's the fire fee? When you mentioned, other towns have fire fees.
I should have said annual fire inspection fee.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
Okay, thanks. Good. Council, any questions? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Chandler has a forty dollar across-the-board fee. Is it per unit or per building?
That is per inspection, so I'm assuming that that would be per unit because that's how we all inspect them, is per unit.
And I, as we went through this discussion a year ago, I recall the conversation that the reason it's important to inspect every unit is because every occupant will have different chemicals or different paper goods stored improperly or, and that's why it's so important to check each unit. Am I seeing this correctly?
I would say that is correct by that assumption. And that's the way that they are inspected is each fire company goes to each individual occupancy, they greet each business owner, they conduct, each separate occupancy has a completely separate inspection that gets a separate paperwork. Corrections are made by unit, by occupancy. That's just how it's done.
Is the, excuse me, is there, I guess what I'm struggling with is if we said a building under ten thousand square feet, if it has five occupants, it's still going to be a hundred and twenty-five bucks to check all five of them. And we wrestled with this very same thing on the first pass and last concluded the twenty-five dollar fee to have the fire department come in and inspect and assure the occupants that are adjoining the buildings that are being inspected that they're safe to have around. And so I'm still sitting back saying, I think we made the right decision at twenty-five dollars per unit.
Thank you. Councilmember Ralke.
Thank you. Randy, indicate that the amount's twenty-five dollars for anything that's under ten thousand square feet. Do you have an idea how many buildings or what that would encompass, what percent of the units that you're inspecting are going to fall under that ten thousand square feet?
It would just be a guess at this point and it'd probably be a very bad guess, but I could certainly get back with that.
Okay. Well, I'll take your bad guess.
How many units there would be?
Well, yeah, well, let me ask you, do you know how many units are, that you're inspecting that are more than ten thousand square feet?
That would be a bad guess also, but it would be a pretty small number. The vast majority would be in that under ten thousand square foot range.
Okay. So the ones larger than ten thousand square feet?
Be a rarity.
Less than ten, I mean?
I would, I would say possibly, yes.
Okay. Are there any, are there any units that are more than twenty-five thousand square feet that you're aware of?
Off the top of my head, I'd say probably Target.
So in effect, I think that's something that the gentleman said earlier. I mean, in effect, it's really staying the same for the vast majority of the units in town if we were to adopt this model of being, you know, ten thousand square feet or less. They're all going to fall within that same price.
Mayor and council, that would be correct. And just to make sure that we're all on the same page, the building would not, if we went with option two, the building would not be, you know, the square footage would not be calculated in aggregate, it would be per unit. So that keeps it, almost every one would fall into that twenty-five dollar range.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
Since we probably do have, like you say, most of them are going to be under ten thousand square feet, what about the idea of breaking down that ten thousand square feet a little bit more? And, you know, maybe starting at twenty-five hundred and then five thousand, seventy-five hundred and ten. And so like, if you're getting down to almost like an executive suite, you know, where you might only have twenty-five hundred square feet or less, you know, maybe start out at ten dollars. So that in the case of someone that owns, you know, a building with multiple units in them, they'd at least be seeing a lower rate for those very small offices.
Mayor and council member Hanson, that would certainly be an option. We've just tried to keep this fairly simple so as a firefighter would go into an occupancy that they could pretty much just pick quickly without having to actually measure the square footage with a tape measure or something like that. And we can certainly go any direction you guys would like us to do. We were just trying to keep it fairly simple.
Yeah, I think the simple idea. I don't like the idea of having to measure buildings and going about things that way. It just doesn't seem real efficient and it'd be nice if we could have a method that maybe is based on the nature of the business, but that's also another measurement and changes. I'd like to keep it, like most of us, probably very simple. But to get to where we're coming from here, the commercial fire inspections have been going on for some time, isn't that right? Randy?
Mayor, that'd be correct. Ever since I've been here and well before that, we've been doing the annual fire inspection.
And we do it annually. And we haven't charged up until two years, or we put it on the books two years ago, started charging more recently or thereabouts. We just started charging more recently, right?
Correct. In July first of two thousand and ten is when the fee went into effect.
I think that's, I don't hear as much concern about... I think that's, I don't hear as much concern about, you know, how big things are, or how, but I just, I think it's the new fee, it's a fee that's now being charged, and hey, you know, we haven't paid this before, it's been going on, and of course, I don't think anybody, not many people have argument with the benefit of doing the inspection, I think, isn't it somewhat required, under code and-
That's correct, Mayor, it is required under our international fire code, as well as town code also, it's in there.
But, you know, whatever we heard last time, it's just an extra fee, it's another, an extra charge. And it is. I mean, we didn't charge it before, we're gonna, we started charging it. Maybe it's a good question for the town manager, interim town manager, or yourself, but why do we start charging this? Why is this something, and I could answer it as well, but I'll give the hard questions over to Ms. Getty.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The methodology with charging a fire inspection fee, or any fee for service, is the idea that only those people that get that service benefit. In other words, if we didn't have the fee, all 22,500 residents would be paying for the firefighters to go and do the inspections of those businesses. Since it is required, it is a cost of having the building, and it's for the benefit of the building owner, not necessarily all the residents in town. So the idea is that the fee would recover some of the cost of providing that service, which currently, the resident, or the property owner doesn't pay for. So that was the theory behind it, and we felt the $25 was a very nominal fee. It takes four firefighters 30 minutes per building, for a small building, to do that, and that's, that's pretty expensive. So the $25 doesn't recover all of the cost, but it's an attempt to kind of recover some of the cost.
So it seems to offset the cost that we've already underwritten with the contract we have with Rural Metro to fund our firefighters, the personnel, and of course, we have the capital, and we all know those things as a town, but it's kind of a cost recapture. But it's a service we've been doing, we just haven't charged for in the past, and it's been enveloped within the cost that the town's underwritten on behalf of all the citizens and businesses in town.
Ah, Mayor, that's correct. All the residents have been paying for that service previous to this. Now the business owners are paying for the service that they're getting.
Or a portion of it. And I think it totaled $10,000, is an estimated budgetary income amount, so obviously, it's not a huge portion of our budget, but it's something that we've moved on a lot of different things to a cost-recapture model, particularly now that we have the program budgeting, where we've been trying to actually pay for the things by those that are being served, by capturing revenue that way. And in fact, if anything, if all things remain the same, we'd in fact be able to reduce our costs, on one part, the Rural Metro contract, not necessarily the contract, but our costs going into it by 10,000, and there'd be 10,000 coming in from there. So it's not necessarily more money for the town, but it's just a cost-recapture shifting to where the costs are coming from. But that's just a thought, you know, we've heard those thoughts brought up, and I think it's a valid thing to go back and make sure we know what the basis is. I don't think it's a, I mean, I think everybody recognizes the safety of it, and values the firefighters, and we certainly do, and we lifted them up big time on 9/11, which is, you know, appropriate, and, but I think it's just getting to, people don't want to pay more. And as far as I can tell, we're not looking at charging anyone more, we're looking at having costs being paid by those that are getting the service. That's how I'd like to see things orchestrated. Councilmember Elke?
I think something can be said, I do agree in part with town manager, but I think there is something to be said, that patrons that go to restaurants, or stay in hotels, or work in town, do benefit also from these inspections that are done. I realize it is to the benefit of perhaps a particular business owner, but I do think that on the whole, we all benefit if those inspections are taking place. We know that they're following the proper procedures and protocols, so therefore, that building, if it does catch fire, is more likely to be less devastating, not only to that building, but perhaps the next building, and the next residences, and the like, and less dangerous, at least for residents that may be occupying those buildings. So I think there is some shared benefit, so to speak, so I, I guess that's what I had to say. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just not sure how big of an issue the $25 is, or if that's at all an issue. The real issue is, hey, you're charging me for something that I've already, that, you know, has already been included for the last 30 years, and now you're starting to charge me for it. I don't know if it's a $25 fee, but as far as going forward, I just want to keep it simple. I think, you know, if we went all the way to a cost-recapture for every service, we'd be on a subscription service with the, with fire service. People that use the fire service, or had an accident, would pay for it, you know, in a bill, when they were done, but that's not how we go about things here. So there's gotta be a good, happy middle here. So I'd love to hear a great motion, maybe, on what to do here, one more down here. Councilmember Brown?
Mayor Schlump, thank you. I move to direct staff to leave the fee as is.
All right, Councilmember, do we have a second on that motion? And currently, as is, is $25 per unit-
Correct.
-without any, regardless of size.
Correct.
Do we have a second on that motion? All right, that motion fails. Thank you for the motion. Councilmember Hanson?
I think a lot, not a lot, some of the labor-intensive part of this will be upfront. The first year, the square footages would be established, so that wouldn't have to be repeated on subsequent years. And also, the dollar amount of what that fee would be for every unit, would be established the first year. So then it would just be a repetition for the subsequent years. So that being said, I'd make a motion to go with the second option, but add additional square footages, 2,500 square feet, well, and lower, would be $10, 5,015, and 7,520.
All right. Could you repeat those numbers one more time? Councilmember Hanson, thank you.
2,500 square feet would be $10, 5,000 square feet, $15, 7,500 square feet, $20, and then the other three would stay the same.
Okay, so it's three additional. Great. Very good, so we've got a motion. Anyone have a second on that one?
Second.
All right, second vice mayor, thank you. Discussion on the motion? Councilmember, or vice mayor?
I'd just like to really tell the people that insurance rates are going up every year, so every business owner has to pay increased rates. Some people don't realize how much those rates go up. We also have, a lot of times, fire inspectors or insurance inspectors come out and inspect our buildings. I mean, this is over and above a fire inspection. But we also sit back and take a look at the economy the way it is, and our business is going down, and we don't have the revenue we had before. That's another point. The other point is, a lot of these people in this town don't pay for anything. We're getting costs, they're getting a free ride. So where are we fair on this? We still have to pay for insurance every year. If you want to be in business, you don't get it. And I think what we're doing is nickel and diming every time we turn around. So how does a business owner stay in business when we keep getting nickel and dime? But yet, the freeloaders that have property in this town, don't pay a dime for fire protection. So where do you draw the line? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just on that item, actually, we're on the, related to the motion, the comment, fire services in Fountain Hills are paid through our general fund, which is funded through sales taxes, and obviously, those come through the businesses, they're not paid through property tax like they used to be. So businesses actually paid directly to a fire district at that time. That fire district was evaporated, what, 10 years ago now? So the funds that come into, say, a restaurant, or retail, or mechanic shop, or one of those, they flow through that business, the consumers pay them, and they come back to us, so the, you know, and some folks might consider that those businesses don't pay the, don't pay for fire service. The consumers pay for it. Now, obviously, if the business wasn't there, the tax wouldn't be coming through from the business. So just to illustrate where the dollars come from for fire service, that's why, you know, with 50% of our general fund being funding public safety, and with the economy going up and down, it's a volatile way to fund things, but we've been doing it, so, but I think, I think Councilmember Hanson's motion, and it's been seconded, is a good one. I think many, we're gonna find many, many, many businesses under 2,500 square feet. I think that's, that's still a decent-sized business. If I remember, and Laurie could correct me if I'm wrong, I think the businesses on the, like a grocery store's probably 30,000 square feet or so, and probably Target's probably closer to 60 or so. So just to give an idea, there's not gonna be a great deal paying very much here. And if, I'm hoping you're right, Councilmember Hanson, that it's not gonna be an onerous thing, or that we're not gonna have businesses saying, hey, I should pay 10 instead of 15. Hopefully, we won't have to spend a whole lot of time on that item. Councilmember Elke?
Thank you. Well, Mayor, if we're adjusting this, and assuming for the sake of argument, that a vast majority are gonna fall below that 10,000 mark, even, I would say, probably below 5,000 square feet, is probably gonna make up a good bulk of the offices or the units. So ultimately, the amount that the town's recouping in cost is gonna go down similarly, so I would estimate, if we're gonna recoup 10,000 at $25 a unit, and the majority are gonna be about 15 a unit, or even, maybe even 10 a unit, you know, that amount's gonna go down dramatically. So recouping maybe 5, 6, 7,000 dollars in cost, which is a drop in the bucket when we're talking about the fire fee every year being at about $3 million, or somewhere there is. So it's really dropping the bucket. And one of the other things that I have concern about is once, and I realize this was voted on last year, and so this fee's in place, and we're obviously revisiting this, one of the main concerns I have is, once a fee's in place, and I think that there was a comment made earlier, that in Chandler, they charge $40 inspection fee. So we're setting a fee here, and over time, I think, we're gonna see, maybe not next year, or the year after, the year after that, we're gonna see increases in these fees. So once that's been set, we're not gonna see a situation where this fee goes away necessarily. I just don't see that the amount that the town's gonna be recouping, the time that staff is gonna have to spend, the time that fire district staff has to spend doing these measurements, with this particular type of breakdown, I just don't see that being very cost-effective or cost-wise with the amount of time that's gonna, you know, that's gonna take, not to mention the billing that's gonna be needing to be set up, okay, you're a $10 unit, you're a 15, you're a 25, or a 20. I just don't see it a good use of staff time and effort, and for, for what, 5, 6, 7, 7,000 dollars? I realize putting the responsibility and putting the service on, or the fee on the people that are getting that service, but I just, you know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Thank you, Mayor, that's a great point, great point. Is it worth it? What's the, I mean, you've been charging for a little while, what's the overhead cost? I mean, how much time is put in, are things invoiced, are we putting a stamp on things? Because once you apply any type of cost to this, there's really no cost-recapture at all, potentially.
Mayor, at this point, I just know that, I think it's been about $10,600 was brought into the general fund last year because of these fees. We figured about an average of 30 minutes' worth of firefighter work, times four, four firefighters in there, and you can just kind of do the math on that. As far as the billing part goes, we'd have to defer to Julie on that part.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, I think the firefighter piece, yeah, I think we value that, we want that to continue, we want to keep our really good ISO rating, and help folks save money with their insurance, and more than any, and keep people safe. But Julie, on the overhead piece, as far as the accounting, the billing, and that's the type of thing, and Councilmember Elke brings a great point, what's, even at $10,000, that's, you know, not that I want to raise the fee so we can collect 40,000 and make it worthwhile, but, Councilmember Hanson, do you have an answer to that?
I think there's ways to determine the square footage. I mean, every tenant has a lease, and in the lease-
Yeah.
...the square footage is in there. So I mean, I think the owners could even be put on the, you know, either the owners or whatever, but those numbers already exist, so I don't think that would be so difficult to-
Yeah, that piece, I think you're right, and it's more like a one-time, and the next year it's taken care of. But how about on the billing? How do we bill?
Mayor, members of the council, currently, the way the system works right now, using a flat fee per unit, we have every piece of property, every unit in the system, so the billing for that is easy. If it's the desire of the council to reduce the fee, you know, the challenge we're gonna have is, we don't, we don't capture all those square footages, and we, and the system doesn't keep them. So we would have to enter all of the, all the square footages for every bill, and then next year, we would rebill it at the same, unless there was changes, and we wouldn't know if there's changes in the building, so the fire inspector, the firemen would have to go back in and see, have there been any changes in the square footage, did they make it bigger, did they make it smaller? So if it's the desire of the council to reduce the fee, I would propose that reduce the fee for everything under a certain square foot, so we can keep it at a per-unit and one rate, rather than having the firefighters to have to go and measure, you know, they would have to do it once, or rely on information that we may get from the county or from a lease, but then it, our system doesn't hold it. We don't, we don't have any way to keep it.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Legay?
I thought I'd enter into the fray here. Recalling our last conversation on this, I think there were two issues. One was cost, especially if someone owns a building and has 10 units, and the other one was being equitable. I believe that the square footage is equitable when you look at the entire building, but then when you break it down by a unit, then I think, you know, that goes out the window as was indicated by the illustration from our citizen this evening. Simplifying things is important, it costs a lot of staff time to do all these things, square footage, so forth and so on, so I'll just throw my two cents in, looking at option one, staying per unit, and just reducing the cost, and keeping it simple, and reducing the cost, and reducing the burden. It reduces the burden on firefighters, it reduces the burden on administration, and accounting, so forth and so on. What would be acceptable to someone, $25, I think is acceptable to most, but seeing that we're talking about $25, you know, leave it as is, option one, and just reduce it to $20 per unit. I mean, it's just, it's not a lot of money in terms of reduction, but I think philosophically, it addresses the fact that, you know, we've heard folks, we're trying to reduce the fee, yet at the same time, we're trying to recover cost, and we're trying to reduce the amount of labor intensiveness that you see with the firefighters and in our accounting system. So, just one more option thrown into the mix, you know, $20 or $15 per unit, keep it simple, and be done and move on.
An amendment to the motion? It's already, we have a motion and a second, right? Yeah.
I'll amend the motion.
Do we have a second on that amendment?
I'd second that.
All right. So now we move on the amendment, right?
What is, what is the amendment? Can you clarify?
Yeah, sure, thanks, Councilmember Elke. Councilmember Legay, what was your motion, or amendment?
To, to move with option one, reduce-
Okay, Mike? Thank you. Good idea.
Thank you. To, the amendment is to consider option one, reducing the rate to $15 per unit.
So is that the appropriate way to amend the motion, or is it to talk about the dollar amounts and go to one at 20?
Mr. Mayor, the cleaner way to actually address it is to, you know, vote the motion up or down on the amendment, or if the sponsor and the second one remove the amendment from the floor, either one, but a complete replacement like this probably should just be, the first one may be voted up or down before you go on to a, what's a substitute, essentially.
Okay, so it's not, it's not close enough to be an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Councilmember Hanson's, unless there's another amendment. The Councilmember Hanson's motion, and second, having that scale. There's been other discussion, there's a value perhaps, and not charging below a certain square footage, and simplifying the billing, and doing that. Any other input? So we've got Councilmember Hanson's motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
I think it was 4-2, but you wanted to roll call to make sure?
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Nay.
Councilmember Elke?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Nay.
And Mayor Schlump?
Aye, I was wrong on my guess.
3-3.
3-3. Three-three. So, that one fails. All right. Have a better motion. We can all agree on. So, that motion's gone. Councilmember Legay?
I move to approve option number one, revising the rate per unit to fifteen dollars per unit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this motion? All right. All in favor of fifteen dollars per unit have any size annually? I indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Right. Roll call again. I might guess them.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
I already voted nay.
You want to vote again?
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
So, that's four-three.
Not quite. She counted.
Or four-two, I'm sorry. Four-two.
Four-two in favor?
Yes.
All right. Thanks. Well, that would need to try another number here. All right. So, I pass four-two. Randy, thanks so much. Thank you very much. Keep up the awesome work protecting us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it.
All right. Does anyone need a quick break before we go on to the next item? We're ready to keep going. All right. Next item, item fifteen, consideration of a contract with Christmas Light Decorators in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-six cents for downtown holiday lights. Paul or Lori?
Thank you, Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor Cantino, and members of the council. This evening brought before you is a contract with Christmas Light Decorators in the amount of approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. As, as you all know, it has been a longstanding tradition to decorate the Avenue of the Fountains for the holiday season. And in the past, the holiday lighting has included a variety of different types of lightings over the years. One is the illumination of various trees on the avenues. It's also included over the years illuminated and non-illuminated holiday displays. And it has also included illumination of the top perimeters of town-owned, town-owned buildings, town hall, community center, and the library. It has also included in the past decorating the outside of the town hall with festival, holiday items. And in past years, also illumination of the palm trees on the north side of the avenues. So, we've had a long tradition of holiday lighting on the avenue in Fountain Hills. Christmas Light Decorators, over the past several years, under a professional service agreement, has provided the decorating services for the town. It has also provided the maintenance of our town-owned holiday displays. And when I talk about maintenance, I talk about also the repair and the preservation of the town-owned holiday displays. And as many of you know, that we've had those holiday displays for quite some time. So, they have also done maintenance, repair, and preservation. They have done upkeep and repair of all the holiday lights during the holiday season. And they've also done storage of town-owned displays during the off-season. And I'd just like to make the council aware, the past two years that we've had a contract with Christmas Light Decorators, they have done the storage of our holiday lights, you know, holiday displays, in the past two years at no cost to us. That's typically an item that they charge for. However, they, they have not charged us for that in the past two years. Christmas Light Decorators has provided commercial illumination and decorating services for fifteen years. They've also provided these services for many Arizona municipalities. And that includes Chandler, Tempe, Scottsdale Surprise, Glendale. Many of you may be familiar with Glendale Glitters, and they do that for them. I'd like to just step back for a moment and share with you a little bit about our discussions during the budget cycle. As you recall, during the budget cycle, we had some discussions of this particular budget item. Last fiscal year, the town council approved a twenty-five thousand dollar budget line item for the holiday lights. We actually expended approximately twenty thousand last year of the twenty-five thousand that was budgeted. During the budgeting cycle, we had discussed this particular line item. And at that time, I shared with you that during the last holiday season, we had many citizens, as well as some of our merchants, request that the town take a look at increasing the holiday lighting. We had, over the past three years, decreased the holiday lighting on the avenue. And so, at the request of the citizens and some of the town merchants, and as well as under the direction of the then-town manager, I included a forty thousand dollar budget line item for the holiday lights. And this was, this, uh, this particular line item in the budget was adopted by the council. And that's why you see this particular budget line coming for you again today at approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. Let me just share with you a little bit about the increase in the holiday lighting that we're proposing under this contract. We will have the, the, the same lighting as we did last year, and it is proposed that we will include three different items during, under this contract. The proposed additions for the two thousand and eleven holiday season would be illuminating the palm trees on the north side of the avenue. And that is lighting fifty-four of those palms. We've done that in the past year, but we certainly, in past years, but we certainly have not done that in the past three years. That is included in this proposal. The other item included in this proposal is upgrading the lightings on some trees that we have currently illuminated, as well as additional trees on the avenue. The additional trees, there's five additional trees on the avenue that are proposed being illuminated, four of which are of the very large trees, some that we haven't had illuminated in the past. The third addition to, to this particular contract is enhancing our town-owned displays, our town-owned holiday displays, by leasing a couple of additional displays. This, this year, we're proposing that we group the town-owned holiday displays into themed items. And, and then we are proposing that we enhance some of those with some leased holiday displays. And so, for example, just let me give you an example of one of the items that are included in here. If you all remember, some of the town-owned holiday displays include the cowboy with the fire and the stagecoach. We're also proposing that we lease two items with that to enhance that particular display, and that would be a Saguaro with a star on it. Actually, two Saguaros with stars on it. In addition, we're proposing to lease several other items which would enhance our holiday displays. I do want to share with you that Mr. Doug Topin, who is the president of Christmas Light Decorators, is in attendance this evening. So, if you have any questions for Christmas Light Decorators, he's here to answer some of those questions. I've done a very high-level discussion of this, and would be happy to get into more discussions and answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Thanks, Lori. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you. I noticed that last year, quite a few of the lights were out a lot of the times. And I'm wondering if it can be rectified this time, since we're paying this kind of money for the, the lighting and to keep the things lit for the Christmas, or the holiday season.
Mayor Schlum and Vice Mayor Cantino. Last year, if you recall, we had, we had some rain associated during the holiday season. And with that, the rain seeped into some of the electrical, the electrical parts, and it popped, and I'm not an electrician, but it, it, it popped the breaker, the circuit breaker. It did what it was supposed to do. You don't want to mix electricity and water. And so, that tripped some of the lighting. And part of our contract with Christmas Light Decorators is to call them when we have problems, and they have a twenty-four hour response time to come out here and fix it. And they did that for us. And so, part of it is the weather that we don't have any control over. The other part of it is our, as you all heard on Tuesday evening in our work session, some of the electrical systems there are still, are, are old. And so, we have to put timers and, and the timers are outdoors in the wind and in the rain and in the elements. And so, sometimes, because of that, the, the lights are tripped. And so, Christmas Light Decorators, they do come out as part of the contract to take care of that. They also come out on a routine basis to take a look at if any of the light bulbs are out, if any of the displays are out, if any of the displays have blown down or have, are damaged. They, our contract is for them to come out and replace that. And quite frankly, they've done an excellent job responding to us in the past years. So, Mayor and Vice Mayor Cantino, absolutely, it is in the contract for them to do that.
Yeah. And you're right. Last year, there was quite a bit. Must have been more rain. But Paul, there's not going to be any improvement if the rain's the same this year, because we haven't addressed the electrical issues on the avenue yet, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Except for the palm trees. I mean, we haven't lit those for a while. Would, would you expect similar issues with electrical in those areas, Paul, or?
The same outlet.
Okay. Yeah. So, we'd have similar issues if the weather doesn't cooperate. All right. Any other questions? The, so Lori, for the additional amount of monies, we're getting the palm trees in general, and the additional displays.
We're getting, Mayor and members of the council, we're actually getting three items. We are getting the palm trees. Now, not all of the palm trees will be lit. We scaled that back somewhat because of the costs associated with that. If you all recall, there are in the island, the parking islands, there are three palm trees in those islands. And we're proposing that we light two out of the three. And so, instead of illuminating eighty-eight palm trees, we'll be illuminating fifty-four. But that is an additional cost. So, with the additional cost, we'll get fifty-four palm trees lit. We will get, we will rent the additional displays, which will enhance the ones that, that the town already owns. And thirdly, we will get additional trees in the avenues illuminated, some that we have, we have not illuminated in the past. And then, on a couple of the other trees, we will get some motion on some of those trees. And there's an additional cost to that.
All right. Good. And so, we are getting additional lights, not just on the palm trees?
That is correct.
More lighting in general.
That is correct.
Including the pine tree at the end of the avenue on Saguaro Boulevard.
We are including that and assuming we can zap that much energy from the outlets that are there, that is certainly in the plan.
No ideas to bring more to downtown, which is a focus we've got here. So, hopefully, there'll be even more events going on down there, and more people taking, participating in the festivities and enjoying down there. And I like the idea of lighting up the palm trees on the business side of the avenue to help them. And I'm sure the businesses will add quite a bit of lighting as well during the Christmas and Hanukkah and holiday season. But I like the idea that, that pine tree at the very end, at the, at Saguaro and the Avenue of the Fountains is, I think if we do that right, that'll be a, a big gathering spot for a lot of folks. We'll come and stop down. If you haven't seen, there's a pine tree. It looks just like a huge Christmas tree right there at the end of the avenue. And if it's lit up well, I think it would be a destination for some folks to come to, because it's so pretty right there. But hopefully, keep the lights on.
And Mayor, that particular palm tree was a discussion item that we had with Mr. Topin.
Now, the electrical, Paul, when that becomes an issue, are we on top of it? What does it take to get it turned on? Is it just resetting something? I think you mentioned before, it affects the timers as well.
Mayor and council, it mainly affects the, the GFI that pops. So, a lot of times, if it happens at seven or eight at night, there's, there's nobody here at the town. The contractor doesn't have the response time to come out, so it'll be off overnight. So, if people want to drive by in the evening, some of them will be out. That's what happened a lot last year. And then what happens is the timers get off, and if, if you don't check each one thoroughly, then it gets off for the next day as well. So, it's-
I know. It's a lot of timers, a lot of GFIs. Can we maybe focus on trying to check them, you know, before, you know, evening comes and everyone's off?
Well, we can, we can check them before we go home, but if it rains in the evening, then we have a problem.
Yeah, I understand.
But yeah, one of the upgrades in the, we want to do in the median is to, you know, try to fix that problem.
Good. I look forward to a great holiday season downtown. All right. Councilmember Elke?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve a contract, or the contract with Christmas Light Decorators in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-six cents for downtown holiday lights.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Legay?
Lori, last year, in line with what Vice Mayor was talking about, last year, unfortunately, a lot of the downtown for the lights happened over the weekend. And, you know, during the week, staff are here to, to observe that, to take phone calls, and to remediate that. So, I'm just hopeful that maybe someone can be on call during, during that season. So, if I receive some feedback, or if I observe that, I can call someone on staff, which I attempted to do last year, but it wasn't until Monday that I could contact someone. I understand it's the holiday season and so forth and so on. But that's, that's a significant issue. We're paying forty thousand dollars. And, and it needs to be, it needs to be addressed. And when we're talking, you know, staff's not here Friday, Saturday, Sunday, please consider that as, as an alternative.
Mayor Schlum and Councilmember Legay, we will take that internally and see if we can figure out a way to make that happen.
Good. Any other discussion? Got a motion and a second? All right. All in favor, Councilmember Hanson? That's got good peripheral vision. I got you.
Since volunteers used to do, light the avenue and check them and turn them on and off every night, maybe we can get a troop of volunteers to keep on top of, if things are out, and figure out something that way.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Mayor, six-zero.
All right. No Scrooges on council tonight. All right.
(singing) Little Christmas, we're just very nice.
All right. Item number sixteen, consideration of an expenditure with Precision Electric Company in the amount of forty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars, forty-eight cents for the repair of motor for Pump Lake, or Fountain Lake.
Mayor Schlum and members of the council, you may recall that last year, we had one of our pumps, one of the three pumps at Fountain Park go down. We effectuated repairs, emergency repairs last year. It became clear that the amount of deterioration of those pumps was probably also occurring in the remaining two pumps. So, we did request, and council did approve, a capital projects budget for this particular line item of replacing, or at least pulling and taking a look at the two remaining pumps. We did the second pump earlier this summer, and the information that I have in front of you shows the various costs associated with repairing and in some cases, replacing pieces of the pump. For instance, it will affect three different parts of the pump. The turbine pump bowl will basically be new. They've already pulled it, taken it apart, inspected it. And that cost is shown there at the bottom of twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, eighty cents plus tax. On the second page, it talks about the reconditioning of the motor itself. That would remain. They'd be replacing some bearings and doing some additional work in there, and also some testing. And that's, there's a cost there of eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and then four hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-five cents in tax. The other thing that he did also suggest, which we did to the earlier pump, was the sandblasting and epoxy treatment for the, the material. We have two issues associated with their use. One is the fact that those have been in operation for decades now. And the second thing is they're operating in the wet wall in a very corrosive environment with high salt content of the lake water. So, we are seeing both deterioration of the pumps, as well as deterioration based on the high salt content. So, with that, I would be glad to answer any questions you might have. Our, our intent again is to, is to, if the decision is made to go ahead with the repairs on this pump, to complete those and then pull the third one and replace or fix that pump. And then we have basically three new pumps that should give us decades of additional operation.
Good. All right. Thanks, Mark. Anyone from the public on this item?
No.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I don't know whether to hear.
Did you move on a motion there?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor? I thought so.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I just have one question.
That's councilmember Elke.
Mark, do you know approximately, have an idea of ballpark what the third pump's going to cost to repair?
Mayor Schlum, councilmember Elke, I really don't because Julie, as the finance director, asked me that very same question. And the analogy that I can think of that I gave her is, it's a little like having an issue with your vehicle and taking it into the mechanic and saying, well, here's what I see, tell me what you see. And when they pull it apart, then and only then can they really give us determination of what needs to be fixed and what needs to be replaced. And so I would expect it to be somewhere in that same range, but the damage could be more extensive. It might be a little bit less. The pump that we worked on last year was in, I don't recall the exact figure, but I believe it was in the mid 30s, $33,000 or something like that. But there was more damage to this one, and there's more parts that actually had to be replaced with new ones on this one. That's why the higher cost. So again, we should be somewhere in that same ballpark unless the damage is certainly more extreme and we're replacing more parts with new parts.
Because it looks like we'd have about $64,000 left in what we had budgeted this year from the CIP fund to pay for that third pump. So it sounds to me, based on what you're telling me from that first pump and this one, that we probably won't exceed that, so we should be okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, a motion, a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. All right, now we have items 17, 18, 19, all in one report from Assistant Fire Chief Randy Roberts. Item 17, consideration of expenditure with Burge Ford under the Pima County contract in the amount of $39,000, or $37,950 for chassis. Item 18, consideration of expenditure with Western Truck Equipment in the amount of $14,837 for utility body. And item 19, consideration of expenditure with Waterus, Arizona, in the amount of $33,000 for diesel-powered compressed air foam pump assembly and tank. Hey, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. Squad H22, it works out of Station One there. You've probably seen it on the road quite a bit. It's the truck that probably gets way more use than any of our other vehicles in our fire department fleet. It's because we have a pretty efficient system where we divide our crews up, and the first call always goes out to this smaller little truck, which takes a lot less maintenance and a lot less expense to run than the engine, plus it allows us to divide up our crews to take two calls instead of one. So that squad is due to be replaced in the vehicle replacement program. It's a 2001 chassis, and it does get a lot of hard use. And the body, it's about a 1985, and the pumps, somewhere in that vintage as well. And so what we're proposing is to be able to save a lot of money here. We're going to do this in three pieces, three major components. We want to buy the cabin chassis off of the state contract, it would be a Ford F-550. And then we were able to, two bids for the body, we weren't able to obtain a third bid because nobody else could come up with what we were wanting. But you can see the two bids there. And then we were looking at a pump package, and we have three bids on that, and that pump package includes a tank for water and foam and also a compressed air foam type of a pump. And we use compressed air foam quite a lot here in Fountain Hills. So we looked at all these components together. We're looking at somewhere in the vicinity of $85,000, and we think that we can probably finish this truck up with another probably $5,000 to $8,000 for stickers and additional lighting and things like that that we require for emergency lights. Where we're looking at trucks that were similar to that type of configuration, and we're looking closer to about $180,000. So we feel like we can save the town quite a lot of money by doing it in these component stages.
Very good. Thank you, Randy. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, council, how about a motion on item 17? Let me make it easier. About, we have a motion on expenditure with Burge Ford under the Pima County contract in the amount of $37,950.95 for a chassis?
Some of.
A second? All right. No one from the public on any of these items?
No, sir.
All right, any questions or discussion on this item? Randy, councilmember Hanson?
I just had a real quick question. Between this rebuilt vehicle or truck or a new one, do you have any idea what the life expectancy difference would be? I mean, would you gain very many more years off of a new vehicle, truck?
Mayor, councilmember Hanson, are you referring to rebuilding the current chassis?
Yeah. I mean, as opposed to, like you said, you're saving, you know, $80,000 to $100,000 by not getting a new truck.
Oh, all these components would be new. They would just be us assembling the components through Metro as part of the contract. All that labor is covered with the contract. It's only a matter of the small parts are not covered.
So then.
But they would all be new components with all new warranties.
You've got a very talented bunch.
Yeah, good. That was going to be my question, too. Good. All right, no further questions on this item? All in favor of item 17 indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
All right, how about a motion, consider expenditures with Western Truck Equipment in the amount of $14,837.36 for a utility body?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
All right, item 19, consideration of expenditure with Waterus, Arizona, in the amount of $33,072.15 for diesel-powered compressed air foam CAF pump assembly and tank?
So moved.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
All right, thanks.
May I ask one question, Randy, before we walk?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Randy, do we still have the old pump? Do we get any use out of the one that's being replaced? Is it completely out of commission?
Mayor, councilmember Elke, actually, it's still all very functional, and it would be up to the town to decide what to do with the parts, whether to move them to another spot and take another truck out of the inventory or whether we'd send it to auction.
Is there a reason we didn't use the old pump?
There's a good reason for using the old pump. It actually is a little bit small for that, for the mission that that truck has. This truck can do brush fires, the current pump can do brush fires. This truck can do car fires. The current truck would be very marginal on a car fire. Also, if the crew is ever out and they encounter a structure fire, the new truck will be able to actually mount an attack while the other truck arrives. The old truck wouldn't be very insufficient for that.
Thank you.
Good. Thanks again, Randy.
Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor has a question. Am I using it for parades?
Mayor, councilmember Cantino, absolutely. You can write in it, too.
Slaring is the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. All right, item number 20, consideration resolution 2011-33 declaring as public record that certain document filed with the town clerk entitled the 2010 amendments to the tax code for the town of Fountain Hills. Julie.
Thank you, Mayor. All cities and towns in Arizona that impose a local sales tax have adopted what we call the Model City Tax Code, which provides uniformity for businesses, particularly those who are multi-jurisdictional, meaning they pay more than just one city. All proposed changes to the Model City Tax Code are reviewed by a unified audit committee and approved by the Municipal Tax Code Commission. And then all those changes that are approved by the commission must be adopted by each city and town. So those changes are before you this evening, and we have in the audience, I'd like to introduce to you the town's sales tax auditor, Albert Haller of Albert Haller and Associates, if you'd like to stand. So if there's any questions that the council has, I realize this is just declaring the document as a public record, but Al is the expert on the sales tax, the Model City Tax Code for the state, and he's available to answer any questions on the proposed changes.
All right. And this is your presentation or your explanation now covers actually items 20 and 21, right? No additional information on 21?
That's correct, Mayor.
All right, good. All right, well, we may ask you some questions here. Let's see if we have a motion on item number 20.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution 2011-33 declaring the 2010-11 amendments to the tax code of the town of Fountain Hills as a public record.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions from Mr. Haller on either 20 or 21? Mr. Haller, are there any substantive changes that you want to go over with us briefly? And welcome, how are you?
Oh, fine, thank you, Mayor.
How many years have you been serving us?
Since we started the sales tax, it's 95.
Long time.
The only one that's a significant revenue source would be the first one on the medical marijuana, should you have a dispensary for medical marijuana. In California, they say that there is, you know, a lot of sales tax revenue generated from those activities. So if you have one, you could expect some revenue increase. The other ones really, quite frankly, don't affect any revenues, either increase or decrease.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other questions from Mr. Haller? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on item number 20. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
All right, item 21, consideration ordinance 11-12 adopting the 2010-11 amendments to the tax code of the town of Fountain Hills by reference.
So moved.
There you go. Thank you. Do we got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this item? There were no speak, public speakers, right? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Good. Item 22, consideration, thanks for coming out, Mr. Haller. Item 22, consideration of resolution 2011-17 approving the transfer of investment funds in the amount of $15 million from the state, from the Arizona State Treasurer's local government investment pool to PFM Asset Management for the purpose of investing according to the town's adopted investment policy. Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The town has always maintained our idle funds in their local government investment pool or what we call the LGIP, and they have always been invested in government securities. And the LGIP acts as a money market, and therefore, since the funds are very liquid, the returns on the investment are very low. Back in May, the council approved a contract with PFM Asset Management that would allow us to keep some investments in a longer term. They would still be government securities, but they would, we would be able to invest them a little bit longer since they would be idle funds that we wouldn't need right away. Mr. Craig Clifford, the senior managing consultant from PFM Asset Management is here to answer any questions on that. Staff is proposing that we transfer $15 million out of the LGIP over to PFM Asset Management for investment. And again, Mr. Clifford's here, available to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
I think the question the public here, $15 million moving from a government fund into a different fund. We'll just ask about the safety and protection of that. Can you just give a little background on why we're doing this and what type of conservative approach we're taking?
Absolutely, Mayor, members of the council. The town investments with the local government investment pool are invested in government securities. That's what our investment policy requires. And we still have the same investment policy. We just recently updated to allow us to invest in other than just the state treasurer's office, the pool, but to allow, but to keep us in government securities. PFM Asset Management deals specifically with municipalities, and they invest in government securities and will have to, they will follow the guidelines that are in our investment policy. So our investments will still be with government securities. They will just be able to be a little bit longer than just as a money market where it's very liquid.
All right, great. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Legay.
Julie, just two quick questions. Our current rate of return, the way we're invested versus what the proposed rate of return is, do you have those figures?
Mayor, members of the council, with permission, I would call up Mr. Clifford. He does have that information with what the current rate of return is on the treasurer's office as well as the proposed or estimated return on, with PFM.
On our investment of 15 million.
Welcome, Mr. Clifford.
Welcome. Thank you. Right now, the local government investment pool is earning about five basis points. That's five tenths of 1%. It's very low. It functions, as Julie has mentioned, as a money market fund. By SEC rules, it averages a duration of about 60 days. The Fed Treasurer has stated that rates will remain low. They're holding those short-term rates very low for the next several years. So any short-term funds are earning near zero. We would be acting as an independent advisor, buying securities on behalf of the city and working with Julie and her staff on your liquidity needs, going out a little bit longer in duration. We're still seeing record-low rates, historical rates on those same securities. But, and I have to be careful what I say here to be in compliance with SEC rules. I can't promise returns, but I would say you're probably going to see four to six times greater return than what you're seeing in that money market fund simply by going out a little bit longer. We've discussed with Julie about using a benchmark industry index of one to three-years Treasury Agency Index that we'll benchmark off of, and hopefully, we can safely meet or exceed that benchmark earnings rate over the long term.
Very good. Thank you.
Julie, my second question was, we're moving 15 million across, what remaining funds do we have that won't be moved over?
Mayor, members of council, the funds that we are proposing to move are really our fund balance, for example, our rainy day fund, our general fund balance, and some capital project funds that we're not going to need over the next couple of years. The money that we are leaving in the pool, we have about a total of $22 million. So there's about $7 million that will be leaving in the pool, which will be available for, for operating, if we need to use it. So we'll leave about $7 million in the treasurer's office.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions regarding this item? No one wants to make a motion, do they? All right, how about a motion on this, item number 22? Can we get a motion to approve resolution 2011-17?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Second, Legay. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. All right, item number 23. Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Item number 23, council discussion direction to the interim town manager, finance director Julie Giddy. None on that item? Do you want to talk about anything on that item or next?
Next.
All right, next. Item 24, council's direction to, and report on recent activity.
Thank you, Mayor.